It is 6:06 PM on December the 6th. We have our work session, we'd like to go ahead and begin. It is a work session to go over the Highland Cemetery code updates. I believe Erin, is that going to be you, or Stephanie?
It will be Stephanie, Mr. Mayor. We've put this off very long, so we didn't have to talk about it during October. All right, thank you Mayor and Council. We are going to discuss tonight a few things that have been on our minds about the cemetery. Been working on a cemetery code update for a while now. We'll just jump into this. Nope. Thank you. I'll let you advance slides for me. So, the purpose of this meeting is just to kind of go over a few things we've been thinking about as regards to the cemetery. With our main goal being that we establish some procedures that will, and some rules that will ensure that the cemetery can maintain, we can maintain a place that's beautiful and peaceful for families for many years to come. So, first of all, a little bit of history about the cemetery. Scott? Well, I can explain what I know. Apparently, this gentleman was insistent upon being buried in the Highland City Cemetery. Mr. Larson, Gregory M. Larson was his name. And I don't know his backstory, if he had, if he had something to do with the cemetery. I don't think he did, but I saw in my records.
To be very open, Greg Larson was the LDS bishop for Mark Thompson. So if you look, Mark Thompson is who we purchased the land from. And Gregory Larson is a longtime Highland resident that lives on 6400 West.
Okay, there's the answer.
His wife still.
Thank you, Mayor. Good information, I'm glad you knew that. So, as you can see, we were established in 1999, officially opened on July 10th of 1999, but our first burial was on July 15th of 1998. So that's kind of interesting information. Our cemetery is on 17.25 acres, and that includes a small portion that has not been developed yet off to the northwest area. We have over 10,000 burial plots in our cemetery with room for over 20,000-plus spaces for people to be buried. Now, the reason we have those extra spaces is because we allow so many different options of burials in one single plot. We allow for a single-depth burial. We allow for two burials, one stacked on top of the other. We allow for three cremations per plot, which would be one at the head of the grave, one at the center, and then one at the foot of the grave. And then we allow multiple combinations of parent and infant burials to be done in one grave. So, in some cases, we have even had room for mom and dad to be stacked in one grave, and then have the infant buried underneath the headstone. And we're sometimes, we allow, or we do allow that, but then we also have parents who want to have a side-by-side grave, but then they want to have the infant usually over the mom, where the mom will be. So, lots of different options, that's why we can place so many different, so many people in the cemetery with the 10,000 plots that we have. And then finally, approximately a third of our plots have already been sold. So we do have quite a few plots left.
Now, with a third of the plots sold, how many actually have someone buried in them? Do you know?
Well, yes, I do.
And maybe that's part of it later in the presentation.
Let me tell you what we have. As of December 1st, we have already, we have done... I'm sorry, I don't have that number for you tonight. I can tell you that since 2016, we've done 486 burials. So, okay. I can get that number for you though, if you'd like, so you know how many people have been buried here. All right. Any other questions on this introduction? Try it once, see if it works. Oh, that goes to you. All right, I just wanted to share a couple of highlights about the cemetery. And this is only the things that I know of that have happened in the last three years since I've been working at the cemetery. So for starters, every year at Veterans Day, we have an elementary school class with Mrs. Lowe's class in Highland Elementary, that comes to our cemetery and puts up flags on every veteran's grave, which is really a wonderful service that her kids do for us. And you can see a few pictures here of these things happening. Then Reeds Across America, that's been happening since 2020, so this will be our third year participating in the Reeds Across America ceremony. This ceremony is in conjunction with the Daughters of the American Revolution, and you may or may not know that our Judge Kelly Schaefer-Bowlock is a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and she is the one who coordinates this program for us. This, you're invited to all be there on Saturday, December 17th at 10:00 AM. There will be a ceremony where we will have speakers, and then they place wreaths for each of the armed services. So you're welcome to attend. We typically place wreaths on every veteran's grave. I just learned that this year, we have not been able to get the wreaths, so I don't think we're going to be able to do that this year, but we will still have our ceremony. And then finally, not finally, but last year, at the Reeds Across America ceremony, we were able to place a plaque at our cemetery for the unknown soldier. It's a Never Forget Garden marker, and if you are in the cemetery and you're looking at that Soldier and Angel statue, there's two walls that go off to the side there. The marker is on the right-hand side here. So when you're out at the cemetery, just take a peek at that, it's kind of, it's a really beautiful marker. And then finally, one of the reasons we're here tonight talking about cemetery is because we are becoming very popular. And a lot of people are coming to our cemetery because other city cemeteries are filling up very, or are almost completely full. So we are seeing people from all places coming here to be buried. And every single day, someone says to me, "Oh, your cemetery is so beautiful." And it really is, it really is. So kind of an overview of what we're going to talk about tonight. First of all, like I say, our goals are to ensure that we have policies and practices that are consistent, so that we can maintain a cemetery that's beautiful for a very, very long time. And that lines up with our second goal, which is preserve the long-term quality of the cemetery. If we can make decisions today that will help us maintain our cemetery for years down the, for years, then it will be of benefit to everyone. So, our main topics of discussion tonight are going to be, first of all, removing some operating procedures from the code. I don't have a separate slide on this particular item. I'll just explain a little bit about what we're kind of thinking on this. We have in our section of current municipal code, there is quite a lengthy section on the duties of the city and the duties of the city sexton. We felt, as we were reading through this, that maybe some of those could be included in an operating procedures manual rather than in municipal code. There are a few things that, and some of the things seem kind of redundant, such as, there were a couple of times when it says, "The city sexton shall oversee the burial, all burials." And that's mentioned a couple of different times. So we're just kind of doing kind of a cleanup on some of those words, on some of the language. Any questions or thoughts about that particular item? I know I'm doing a really high overview on this.
Do we have resident and non-resident rates at a cemetery?
We do. So currently, our resident rate is 1,175, and our non-resident rate is 1,641. And those rates go up every year, July 1, 3%. The next thing that we're going to talk about is going to be headstones. A lot of talk about headstones tonight. Besides, we need to maybe talk about some size requirements for headstones. We'd like to talk about proposing doing a setting fee for headstones when monument companies come into the cemetery. And then also, in regards to a timeframe for when we will allow and won't allow headstones to be set. And this is mostly due to weather conditions and the ground conditions out on the cemetery. And then we will talk about, propose some dates that we feel might be beneficial for us to close our cemetery for burials. We'll talk a little bit about that after that we talk about cemetery, headstones. And then finally, we will talk about plot reservations, which is another issue that we've, something that we do right now, that I want your opinion on and your direction on. Any questions about what we'll be talking about tonight? Okay, I think I'm going to turn the time over to Josh and Trevor, so that they can talk a little bit about headstones now.
I'll start. So we just want to control the height of the headstones, as we've had an increase of higher headstones. And our problem is that we know that in the future, is we get more, our sprinklers won't make it over them. And so we're just trying to keep the dry spots from increasing and causing wear and tear on the headstones, because some of them are super high that are right next to the heads. We have the tallest sprinklers that are available for the coverage we have, so that they pop up as high as we can to reach them. But as we have an increase of higher ones, it's making, so that we're not making it from head-to-head to get, head-to-head coverage. And then there's some that's increased in size and outside their perimeter, which don't allow us to go past those to complete graves. So if you're not familiar, there's a few that have an angle on them, and there's a few that are larger that we can't get past. So, I think that's one of our biggest concerns, is probably the coverage on the sprinklers and getting access.
So Josh, as we look currently in the cemetery, how many headstones do we have there? I mean, just a guess, if you don't know, there are over this 36-inch that we're trying to propose. I mean, I know there's, like you have the McMillan one that's on the angle, I think, you know, just trying to think of how many you might have.
Currently, we've probably a third.
A third of all the headstones are over 36 inches?
Yes. I mean, it could be just an inch over, it could be three feet over, but we do have, I mean, and it's getting increasingly more common to get these tall headstones.
We actually have one headstone currently in process of, well, it's not a headstone, it's a statue of an angel that's 10 feet tall or so, that we're working very closely with family on to make sure it's engineered to be safe. It does actually exceed our restrictions a little bit from a depth standpoint, but absolutely are seeing requests for very large ones.
And we already have a base restriction in place, but we don't have a height restriction. So with that narrow and base restriction, the taller you go, the less stable the headstone is. And I don't know if any of you visited the heads, or the cemetery, it's probably the windiest place in town. So, I mean, it raises some concern for safety. Operating around them is very difficult, getting our equipment in between. Yeah. And a lot of the other cemeteries in comparison have very similar heights restriction. We do not have a height restriction.
I think you had a slide on that, didn't you?
Yes. So every cemetery has a height restriction, except for us. They may be a little taller than us, they may be a little shorter, we kind of took the average.
So I guess on each of these topics, Mayor and Council, we're hoping for some direction. So we've written, kind of on the main levels, right? So cemetery headstone, or size, excuse me, the height. The draft code we have says 36 inches is our new maximum. And we've talked about a staff internally, we'll work with families for about six months to a year to allow for taller, just because they might already have them in production. But, so we're asking for your, do you feel comfortable with us bringing that to you in code at this point as a restriction? Or do you have more questions you want answered before then, before we bring it back to you in January, is the intention?
So, I guess my question is, is how did you come up with 36 inches? Obviously, there's two other cities, but Lehigh has 48-inch and Eagle Mountain, 48 inches. Is it just you measured sprinkler heads, or what? Or just kind of pulled it out of a hat?
We compared with American Fork and Alpine, because they have the slopes. Orum, Lehigh, Spanish Fork, they're flatter.
So you're talking about slopes of the land?
Yes.
Right, okay.
So, we compared kind of, you know, what's similar to us. And my thoughts, Alpine's probably the most similar to our cemetery.
I don't have any issues with this, and I mean, it seems like it's pretty average here, this isn't my area of expertise though, so I guess I just kind of defer to those who maybe have more experience. It's very like Kurt and Scott.
Well, my... It's never have a headstone that's taller than you are in life. Yeah, we are getting that. Who knows?
You opened it up, I couldn't, I couldn't help it.
You know, for me, I mean, I'm okay, I'd like to actually go over, now that we're talking 36 inches, and actually go see what some of the headstone sizes are. But are you, so the reason why you're choosing 36 is because the sprinklers are getting blocked if they're going higher, and we're getting the dry spots.
Equipment turns, equipment availability to get equipment in, and I would say soil conditions underneath with the height and the base size. So as they get bigger and the slope.
So to me, I'd like to just go walk the cemetery and take a measuring tape and kind of understand. I mean, I, and I bring the McMillan up, because that's kind of one of the more, I think a lot of people visit, it's on the angle, it was a schoolteacher that, you know, that had unfortunate, you know, ending of the life there with, and so with that situation, I would just like to understand, you know, what some of, you know, to find out what we're seeing. And then also to be sensitive. I mean, I know last year, and I know that we were out there quite a bit in the winter, as we entered the winter, it's hard there in the cemetery with different, especially with some, by the way. But I do agree with what Erin Wells mentioned, we probably need to give a little time, because for tombstones or headstones, usually people are ordering and it's a little bit way out. And right now, because of COVID, it could be further out, I don't know what the timing's been. So, back to Kim, I think, Scott, you have cemetery plots, don't you?
Yes, I do.
And I do too, so we probably are too experienced where we have our plots, so.
We have our plots.
We're anxiously waiting.
As, I'm seeing a lot of the benches are probably the most popular headstone nowadays.
Trevor, would you mind speaking right into the phone, microphone?
That 36-inch will still allow for a full bench.
Because I've noticed, like, some people are adding the benches for people to be able to come in.
Yes.
I mean, there's a couple others, I want to go see, I have several, and I'm sure, Scott, you know, several residents that I've known, and wanted to see what some of their families have chosen, and, you know, specifically on some of their headstones, to see what, why they chose that size, or, I mean, because like with mine, I'm going, okay, I'd like to have a nice one with me and my wife, and I want to see how that fits within those 36 inches. Kim, is there any other words of advice from a younger one?
I need to start looking for my plot.
You need to buy them when they're cheaper.
Are we going to go through, I pulled up the contract, and we can go through this a little bit later, we just want to add some questions on the contract we have people signing, so.
I think a height restriction makes sense. I'm with the mayor, I'd like to walk around, but I think it makes sense.
I mean, for some individuals, to be very open, they do go and walk there, it is a, and it is touching. I mean, when I walk, it's memory lane for me. You know, when I, when I go, I see several individuals that have fond memories as I'm there in that cemetery, so just, I want to just kind of get a feel of it. And I think that's why the cemetery is so sensitive, is it has those feelings.
You're going to cover dates?
Yeah, so the next thing we want to bring up, kind of a hard closure for headstone sets between October 31st and April 1st. These are our winter months, weather conditions are up in the air. Problem we'll have is it'll be a nice sunny day. One day, the monument company calls and schedules for three days later, we get rain, they're out there, and they rut up our cemetery. And we're just trying to eliminate, you know, as much traffic on the grounds as possible in the winter months.
I really don't have a concern, I think that, I actually think this is wise.
Now, can you explain that again? I'm kind of slow here. It says, "No headstone sets allowed after October 31st, but after April 1st, they'll be allowed only with your discretion." So when are you supposed to put these in?
True, so April 1st is just a hard, you know, that's springtime, it's when it's getting, you know, better weather and everything, but we still do have rain showers and things that could make, you know.
So are you always setting headstones in the summer? Is that what you're saying?
Well, from April 1st to, I mean, we could have a dry April, and they could get the setting right at April 1st, it was just a good.
If it's rain for like two weeks, we just want to be able to push them off a little bit, so that Trevor can say, hey, can you come back when it dries out just a little bit? So I mean, I think it's hard to put a date on from here to here, when we could say, well, April's getting warm enough, but we might receive several weeks of rain showers off and on, and it might not be as consistent, like, well, if you can wait a little bit till it dries out, so that it isn't super wet. That's, I think that's where kind of April comes in, is we think that April's a good time where we have a mix of weather changes, like, sometimes it is dry, like Trevor said, sometimes it's super wet, but once we kind of get past that, then they can kind of, then come. But we just want to make sure they're not showing up when it just rained two inches the day before.
Frost plays a big factor, you know, the ground may be hard early in the morning, soon as the sun comes out, it's a sponge. And last year's probably the best example, it was horrid. We had a very, very wet fall, and then followed up by a very mild winter, and it, the conditions out there were just horrible for anything, even digging graves. And we just want to minimal, minimize the amount of traffic we have out there, because these aren't just, you know, pickup trucks driving out there, they're big, heavy trucks, they're usually stacked with several stones, they hit several cemeteries in one day, and it's ugly when it's wet. And we have, you know, equipment to get them out onto the wet grass, but if they're coming to set five headstones, it's basically an all-day job to sit and move those drive mats from location to location, so they can set a headstone. So, we're just understaffed at the cemetery to accommodate that all-day kind of thing, so.
Anyone else have any concerns between the, having, they can't bury between April 1st to October, not burial, headstones from April 1st to October 31st, and then with discretion of the sexton after April 1st, depending on the conditions, the weather conditions?
All right, and this is going over, we're looking at the, put in a $50 headstone set fee, this goes charged to the monument company. This kind of covers my cost, or my cost, Stephanie's cost of planning it all out. Also, it'll kind of just keep the monument companies honest. A lot of times, they'll call in and schedule, and they'll ghost us. I've already gone out, marked out the grave, they'll call in next week, same thing. I go out, mark out the graves, because the marks have all been mowed off from the week prior, don't show up again, show up the third week, and they said, where's my marks? And I'm out there marking it again. So this will just kind of cut down on that. Also, these monument companies, they do cause some damage when they come out, not intentional, broken sprinkler heads, whatnot, so this cost will kind of go to covering those.
Do other cities charge this?
There are other cemeteries that do charge a headstone set fee, I can't, I don't know which ones they are.
We have to always remember, I understand you're saying it's going, you know, to the company that sells it, but that always will be passed on to the customer, so.
Is $50 enough, do you think, to cover this?
I believe so.
Okay.
So it takes me probably an average of 30 minutes with two guys, you know, pulling the tape out, so we make sure we get the headstone in the right spot. I don't know exactly how much Stephanie's time is taken up, but.
It takes me about 15 minutes per headstone order.
We looked at their, the total compensation to employees, so the benefits and salary for Trevor, Jaden, who's the assistant at the cemetery, and Stephanie, and it equated to about $50.
Perfect, okay.
Any questions there?
Scott, we okay paying it?
Well...
That's right. It'd be interesting though, I'd like to see the total fees if someone comes in. Of course, the cost goes up every year for the plot, and those of us that have planned ahead got it at a discount. But at the same time, I'd like to know how much, because, you know, burying somebody is really expensive now, and I think it's kind of getting out of reach for a lot of people. So I'd just like to see kind of a total cost.
Councilman Smith, I believe that the costs kind of fluctuate depending on, for instance, if you're a resident or a non-resident.
Right.
Then your plot will be less if you're a resident, and then it also fluctuates if you have, if you're doing a double-deep burial, or whether you're doing a single-depth burial, or whether you're doing it on a weekend, or whether you're doing it on a weekday. A cremation is also different. So their costs will fluctuate quite a bit based on what they choose to do and when they choose to do their burial.
What's the difference between a cremation and a regular burial?
Your cremation on a weekday is going to be $500, and your regular burial is going to be $600. That's on a weekday.
So when we did our cemetery care fund study about four years ago, the opening and closing fees were calculated to be based on the time that our workers spend and the equipment, the cost of the equipment, and so they were pretty precise in that regard. I absolutely agree with you, Councilmember Smith, they are not cheap. And actually, honestly, a plot itself is, when you're talking over $1,000, that's a big cost to swallow. But I will say that the opening and closing fees are calculated based on what it costs the city to do. And we actually, we are in the process of updating those fees, it's kind of gotten bumped a couple of times, but we're working with Zions to get those updated, because in the last year or so, we have increased the level of care in our cemetery, like with drive mats that Trevor spoke to and things, to try and better maintain, but it does cost more staff time to do that, and that's currently not accounted for in our fees.
The headstone setting fee would be the same, no matter if they were doing, what they were doing, a bench or a tall angel or whatever.
Yeah, it doesn't matter on the size, it's just a flat rate.
By time blocking.
Yeah. And it's meant to kind of just clean up the monument companies from, but like Kurt mentioned, it will probably be passed on to the, to the customer. it will probably be passed on to the, to the customer.
I think we'll go ahead and move to the next point.
So we did a comparison with the dates that the other cities, surrounding cities are open. And most of them are pretty much these holidays. The American Fork, I like theirs because it mentions that anything that's observed by the city is a closed date on the cemetery. This just helps the guys in Public Works that helped me in the cemetery. So, you know, they can enjoy these families, these holidays with their families, myself.
How often are we getting requests, like to do it on one of those, you know, New Years or Labor Day or a special veteran? I can see Veterans Day being a special day for some.
I've done quite a few on Veterans Day. I've done a few on New Years. I've done one the day after Thanksgiving. I've even done one on Sunday. And it's, yeah.
So the concern, like if you're, if, if we'd go off the days that the city's closed, we could be closed on that Thursday of Thanksgiving and that Friday. And unfortunately, you know, you could have, I guess they'd just have to work with the burial, but that makes it, then we'd come back on Saturday?
Yeah.
Actually, we would do Friday because our closure date would be that Thursday. So Friday, we're already closed anyway. So to give some preface, right now, the only days the cemetery is closed for burials, so we are closed on Sundays. And that's in, in line with the city, the fact that the city, all businesses are closed on Sunday, right? So we don't do burials on Sundays, except for rare occasions, it sounds like it's happened. We don't do burials on Christmas Day and then Memorial Day weekend is currently all that we are technically closed for burials. And, you know, probably forty-plus weekends a year, we're out there doing burials. And so this was a thought of just trying to give them some actual days off where they are guaranteed to not have to be there. You know, and we, we absolutely want to work with families during this sensitive time, but we're also trying to balance that with preserving the, you know, just letting our guys have holidays as well.
I have a question. What was the exception that you made for a Sunday burial?
At the time, nobody could see a reason or anything in writing that says we couldn't do it on Sunday, or we couldn't allow it on Sunday. And other than our, you know, our city ordinance as a whole.
What was the reason you made that exception?
The kindness of my heart.
And that's a great reason, especially in a situation like that. I was just wondering if there are exceptions in place, policy for religious reasons. If someone said that's the reason you're doing this is because the predominant religion is Christianity and we are of another religion that honors Saturday, for example. Is there anything on the books for that or, pardon me? Or something like that. I mean, is there?
Is there, are you aware, I mean, I think we do need to be sensitive. Is, are we aware, is there any religion that does require? I think there's some that you have to be buried within so many days of passing.
Isn't, that's Jewish, correct?
I think Jewish.
You know, and honestly, in that kind of situation, we would make an exception and we would allow it to happen. We, we have been flexible when, when there are special needs that arise.
Okay, thank you.
I, I always try to accommodate people. I, I dug a grave on Thanksgiving Day because they wanted it for Friday and we didn't find out about it until late Wednesday night. And so I came in on Thanksgiving and prepared the grave and we did the burial the next day on Friday.
So which one of these policies are we following right now?
None of them actually.
None of the above. Just Christmas and Memorial Day weekend is all we do, and Sundays, excuse me. So we're proposing essentially, they, it just follows the city holiday calendar, which we recently updated in the personnel reg. So it would just be the days that the city is closed or observing the holiday.
I would agree with that. I would like to respect your time as well. It's a hard job.
I'd like to make comment though. I, I think it's important to respect the staff and I think a lot of these holidays make sense. But if you have a loved one and you're trying to figure out that's died and you're trying to figure out the funeral and getting all the family coming, and now we've got to work around several holidays, including some holidays that some people question why they're a holiday, like Juneteenth. I've had, I mean, my son-in-law is African-American. He's had, explained it to me four times what's significant of that day. So I have a little trouble with all of these because I think if you have a loved one die, which you're basically dictating to them when they can bury their loved one. So I think we need to be fairly, a little more flexible. Cause that's a lot of holidays there, some of which aren't considered by a lot of people.
Well, no, and that's, and I'm, I have to support Scott a little, but I think there's some, and I'm just going to, the city might recognize, but maybe not a private employer recognizes. So we say, hey, that's a holiday, but for them, they haven't recognized it. You know, for instance, like a Veterans or, your Human Rights Day, I think, and you're talking in January, a lot do that, but there's some private entities might not. You have, you know, we talked about the.
President's Day.
President's Day, June, June, June.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth. And then you have, you know, Veterans Day. Now, some would say Pioneer Day. And I think we could be flexible because those are, but I don't know if we need a, that's twelve days there. And I, I don't know.
Plus Sundays.
Plus Sundays. Do we have twelve days in our city policy? Is it, I thought it was.
This is directly copied, pasted from our city policy.
To be very open, I thought on the, on that, that there were some that was floating, that they could choose.
You're right. So, so we pay for, did you say that's fourteen? I'm sorry, twelve, or twelve?
You pay for eleven?
So we pay for however many count is up there. If, if they fall on a Sunday or, you know, we might do a floating holiday, right? We might not actually close the city offices depending on when they fall during the weekend, if that's the case. So we, we kind of take it on a case-by-case basis every year, depending on when the holiday falls. So for example, for Christmas Day this year, right, that falls on a Sunday, we're, we're recognizing that on that following Monday because that's when the state is doing it. They're closed on Monday. And so we followed suit there. So for, for example, we wouldn't, we already don't do burials on Sunday, so we wouldn't do Christmas Day, nor would we do the twenty-sixth if this policy were updated.
Days like Veterans Day, that's a split holiday. So if it were to fall on a weekend, it would be, you know, covered one way or the other.
But it could fall on Veterans Day, it could fall on a Monday or Tuesday. And like I said, some.
I believe there are Veterans Days.
Usually Veterans Day, what we call Government Day. The government gets off, but the, the others go.
The banks. Yeah.
Honestly, any, if council, if there are some days on here that you're uncomfortable with, you know, I'd say anything where from above, from where we're at would be preferred, would be appreciated, I should say. This would be preferred just because it would be simple for us, you know, as staff, because we know what days we're going to be off. So I think it would be simple. But if there are some that you feel like we're going too far, but you're willing to add others, that would be appreciated.
Well, I understand where the staff's coming from, but if you count up, we've already eliminated sixty-three days in a year's time. That's over two months when you can't be buried. And, and I think unfortunately, it's kind of like the experience I have in the hospital a little bit. The hospital likes to close down over the holidays and stuff. You can't get a lot of services, but people still get sick on those days and I have to take care of them. It's really frustrating. So I'm just thinking of people, if your loved one died on Christmas Eve, now we're saying like this year, you couldn't get, even think about any sort of funeral or anything till the twenty-seventh. And maybe we wouldn't anyway. But I'm just kind of, I, I think we need to be maybe flexible on some of the minor holiday ones, like the Juneteenth and Veterans Day and Pioneer, or not Pioneer Day, but be maybe a little flexible with the families because families have to have everybody come in for the funeral. And I think we have to be careful not to say, well, you can only have it on certain days. You know what I mean?
No, absolutely. We want to, this is a sensitive subject and a sensitive time for families and we want to respect that.
So Scott, you're good with the majority of the days?
Oh, I'm, I'm good with both of them, but Human Rights Day, Juneteenth, and I'm not discounting that they're important days. I'm just not sure that we should restrict those days from burials if someone has to do it, you know.
I understand where Scott's coming from, but I know, you know, in, in burying some of my family members, we had to wait. And whether that was because the funeral home had other things going on, like there's a lot of reasons you have to wait. I'm in favor of the dates. I don't understand the Memorial Day quite, and maybe you said this and I missed, about the Thursday through the Monday?
So Memorial Day weekend is a very busy weekend in the cemetery and there's a lot going on, so.
Oh, I see.
You have a lot of people in the, in the cemetery.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that makes sense. And it's hard to have a burial with, everybody's trying to get in and put flowers on there.
Yes.
Nothing's great. It, it makes sense to me and I'm very supportive of all of those.
Other counsel? I kind of favor Scott. I think there, you know, maybe, you know, maybe pull off two of those and I probably would be the Juneteenth and the Veterans where, you know, to keep it a little open, but. And like I said, it's not about, not the importance, definitely, you know, I understand, but I think there's, we can have a lot of dates. But we also want to be sensitive. What, now, we've got, so this, because this gets, so Sarah, you're favor of the dates up there. Brittany?
Do you like them?
I'm in favor of having days that were closed. I would be okay with Human Rights Day or, or Juneteenth still having burials. But in general, I think it, I think it's nice to have some days set aside that, that we don't have burials.
Scott, the dates, once again, that you.
Well, I, I'm just thinking President's Day and Juneteenth and, you know, even Human Rights Day. I mean, if, if it has, if, I, I would say let's not do burials unless you really have to accommodate the family, you know. The other days, I don't have any problem with.
Kim and Scott, Josh, Kim, where are you at, Kim?
Agreement.
Agreement with what?
Both of them. I mean, sorry, you know, I definitely want our staff to be able to have these holidays off, but Juneteenth and, and Human Rights Day, I think we can make exceptions there. And, and I feel like our staff is pretty good. If you see an area in which, you know, a family needs to make an exception, I think they're pretty.
Right.
And Human Rights Day and President Day, President's Day, they're both Monday holidays. They always land on a Monday. Monday is probably our least popular day to have buried. And regardless, I'd have to have the grave prepared prior. So, I mean, those two days don't really bother me. Juneteenth, that's due last year, right?
Correct.
Got no preference.
Maybe that's why we're having, because it's, it's a new one that we're not familiar with and.
It's, it's the Thanksgiving Day, the Fourth of July. It's, it's where, when everybody has a long weekend and then all of a sudden, you know, you know, people make, when people like to make plans and all of a sudden I got to come back from a camping trip because I have a Saturday burial.
Tim?
I agree with Kim. I think those are good days. And I think, and I thank you for making exceptions.
Yes.
And because you felt it was the right thing to do.
Okay, so what did staff hear?
So do I understand that I heard that we do want to say we are closed on these days. However, on a case-by-case basis, we can make exceptions if we feel like it deems necessary.
I think you're, what you're looking at is that you're going to have what we call some days that I think the staff needs to know, like your, your New Years, your Memorial Day, Independence, Pioneer, Labor, Thanksgiving, Christmas, you know. They, they need to know, you know, that they, they have those off. I think that what you're hearing is have a hard, those are hard days. The others, if we can be a little flexible with what the family needs, and they need to give a little bit of a reasoning why that date's the only day that works for them, I think.
I, I agree. Only exceptions on those couple of days, but the other ones, let's let staff plan.
From a, from a code perspective, am I writing in that we're closed all of the time? Or are we writing, and maybe say at the bottom, exceptions may be made for minor holidays under special circumstances?
Yeah, I would list those. There's two or three that you could just list, saying exceptions could be made for these.
Everyone will always fill their exception. Okay, other things? Anything else on the cemetery?
I think I was there.
Yes, I think we still.
I'll go back to you.
Thank you.
And I have to ditto what Trevor and Josh are amazing to work with. They bend over backwards for everyone who, I mean, I can call them and they'll make, they'll work miracles. They literally do, so.
And Trevor, I've had a lot of good compliments about the cemetery staff and how workable you guys have been, so thank you.
They are fantastic. We're lucky to have them here, so. All right, this topic comes to you simply because you have voiced concerns in the past about being the bank for purchases of city property or whatever other things might come up. I just wanted you to be aware that currently we do offer plot reservations, which means a family can come in and they can put down ten percent on a plot or multiple plots. And then they have a year to pay that off interest-free. So as you can see, I don't have a lot of customers who do this. I don't openly offer this option. But if they, but if they ask, then I certainly offer it to them. Right now I have ten customers with reservations with a total of sixteen plots that are being reserved right now, waiting to be paid off. So not a lot of, not a lot of customers, but I bring this to you and for your feedback. Do you want, is this something that you want to continue?
So, so they put down ten percent? Do they have to then make payments to you or is it put on their utility bill and billed?
No, so the process with this is they sign a reservation agreement and they put down the ten percent. They agree to the rate that is charged, that is the rate of that, that day. So let's say someone comes in on June thirtieth, they will get June thirtieth price, which will be good for that whole year. Okay, so, so they'll have until June thirtieth of the following year to pay that off in full. When you see if there are the pros and the cons for that, one of the things is there's a little bit of potential loss of revenue for this because a plot that I could sell at three percent higher, the next year, they've reserved at the lower price the previous year. Not a big, you know, just something for your consideration.
Well, it's not something we advertise, but you know, some families just don't have that thousand.
Exactly.
Or fifteen hundred dollars to plop down right then. And they, and some people may be anticipating for, if you have an older patient who's on hospice that you think may die during the year, you might want to kind of get that set up. But you know, it is expensive to bury people and you just plan on paying ten thousand dollars anymore. And a lot of people don't have that. So I, I kind of support laying to do this because, one, you're not advertising it. Two, you don't have too many people. But it is an option for people that are trying to take care of their loved one and they're restricted on funds, especially now with the economy being a little rougher. That's, that's my opinion.
Would they, would you allow a burial to happen for that type of purchase or do they have to pay the full amount for a burial?
It has to be paid in full before they will allow the burial.
That was the only concern is something happened. So they're paying in full if it's a burial. What are we seeing with these? Are these individuals buying extra plots by, maybe they had a burial right now and now they want to buy the three plots by that person buried and they're doing the term? Are these usually people saying, hey, I want to start reserving down in the future? What are you seeing usually?
I'm seeing every single possible scenario. I'm seeing someone come in who purchases a plot for burial but can't afford to do that, you know, purchases a plot, does a burial, wants the plot next to it, can't afford it. So they'll pay off the one and then reserve the other. I've seen that. I've seen people come in and my most common thing is people just come in and want to, to reserve a plot. They don't want to pay for it all upfront or they can't. And so they'll just reserve it and pay it off over the year. Most people, I'm, there's some that will make monthly payments on it. Most people I find, they'll reserve it and then they kind of forget about it until I start sending them notices. And then they'll pay it off in a lump sum later down the road.
Have you had anybody default and go beyond the year?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So what happens then?
So the ten percent goes back to, we, we retain the ten percent. It goes as part of the cemetery care. And that's all very upfront in their contract and they know that if they don't pay that off in the year, then they lose the reservation and they're, they lose their ten percent.
Goes up in price, right?
Do you take, do you let them pay with credit cards and can they pay with a credit, like make monthly payments on a credit card?
They can. They can call in and make a monthly payment with a credit card, but we now charge them three percent on that. So a lot of them, I, I, my customers now, when they, when they call in and say, I want to pay for it with a credit card, some of them will go ahead and pay with the credit card and pay the three percent fee, but I'm seeing a huge increase in checks with our cemetery transactions.
I wanted to let you, council, know too, to Scott's question about what happens if they lose their money. So Stephanie goes above and beyond trying to contact them. You know, we give them twelve months. We, we try to call them. You know, we give them a little extra time if they need to, kind of a thing. We certainly don't want them to default. It just, in some situations where it's just not possible, it has happened. So, or we can't reach them or things of that nature.
I actually had a gentleman who had reserved a few plots prior to COVID and his business kind of fell apart during COVID and he was not able to finish his purchase on those plots. So we extended him several months and in the end, he still was not able to. And so we, we do try and work with people just as much as we can. And I do send out reminder notices at six months, nine months, and eleven months to. nine months, and 11 months to, um, reach these people. And then even, you know, if they haven't paid by that 12th month, I'm gonna get them on the phone.
See, my only concern is there's an extra, we're starting to see them, you know, that there's a lot more cost in, in doing that. I mean, I'm not against, I understand that if someone buries someone, they want to make sure they could reserve and if they don't have the money, I think we've got to be sensitive. This is different than someone trying to buy property to me, because it, even though this is, this is, this is different if you're trying to buy it by your loved one. However, because of all of your extra costs, there might need to be an application fee for this to try to help cover some of your costs of, you know, of paperwork, the calling, you know, that was, that, you know, want to be sensitive to it, but they, they're, we're occurring more costs to do this.
And really, that's, I bring it to you for your, for your direction on this. I, really, you know, we don't have a lot of customers who do this. Uh, it's, for me, it's, uh, whatever you choose to do, it's no, I just wait for your direction.
I understand the mayor's point, but at the same time, I think that the cemetery is, I don't know, it's a, it's a, one of the more important services that we provide. I don't know.
I think our cemetery is our, um, we do treat the cemetery a little bit different because it is so
We do.
so tender to so many, and that's, that's how it has to be.
And you're not talking about a lot of situations here. That, that's what you, that's the only thing is, this is not, you know, when we're trying to talk on the level, this is so low of the concern.
We're not in it for the money, right?
No. So, if I'm understanding you correctly, are you okay with us continuing to do, to offer this service?
Well, if you're starting to see abuse, then maybe bring it back, but right now, I don't see.
Yeah, I agree 100% with the mayor.
Okay. We'll continue doing that then. I think the families will be appreciative of that. I just know that in, in other conversations, you've been concerned about being the bank, so I wanted to make sure that this was not something that you were concerned about, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I believe that is the last.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, please. Ask questions.
So, if there was, I don't know if we have, there, one thing that has come up, we have out on, by SR 92, we have some, uh, behind some homes, about three or four homes, we have a parcel of, of ground that is still part of the cemetery. And at one time, we talked about moving the maintenance building back behind there. I think we need to get that decided, excuse me, because we would need to reserve a, a, a way to get back into that area, if that was a desire to.
I'm gonna let you address this.
I think there's a row. There should be a row of access there.
We just double check because I just.
Double check, but I'm pretty sure there's a row of access that's always given us back there. I mean, I've always loved to see a spot, if we were able to do a fence and a spot to grow sod and have some trees and some things there at the cemetery ready to go as an as-needs basis. Um, but I think it needs to be blocked.
So, there's, in the cemetery, there's a corner by Highland Elementary. We're talking the opposite corner by SR 92. By the church.
The northwest corner.
Yeah.
Is, yeah, it's been there. So, I would love to see a big section that we grew sod and had that to, um, go for winter graves and stuff like that. But I think it needs to be blocked. I think it needs to have a concrete fence out there along the highway and you can't see it.
Yeah, I, I agree, because it's.
You'd need to put something, a barrier behind the people's homes too, and true.
And then we, just FYI, and I don't know if you can back out and maybe show Mark Thompson's property, and I'm just, there, Mark Thompson did talk to me, or, the cemetery originally was purchased from the Thompson family and they gave us some terms developed to purchase that. I'm not sure where, uh, the Thompsons are at currently, but can you click on that? So, that parcel right there is still owned by the Thompson. I'm not sure we'd have to communicate if we were interested to try to reserve more property for the cemetery. That is something that the Thompsons still retain, that there had been some conversation of very interest in looking at that. And so, we, we need to kind of be sensitive there. Two other things I was not aware was in our, in our agreement. That kind of surprised me as a, and Scott, that, so one, we have a transfer fee, but everything that says, we have a transfer fee, but this is not, but we have a thing that says non-transferable in our agreement.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. This is, um, on our burial certificate itself that you're issued, you will notice, and you probably saw, I don't know if you saw on yours, but it says, you can, this, it's to you and your heirs. So, I have, um, we do allow transfers to their heirs. Um, we are working on a, on a definition for that currently. Um, as families have come in, I have been allowed, I've allowed them to transfer to family members as their heirs. Um, but not to friends or neighbors or anything like that. Um, but we are, we are working on a definition for heirs, so we can clarify that. But there is that kind of, just, that kind of discrepancy there. That's something that I'll need to work with Rob on to kind of clarify.
The, the next thing I was a little concerned, and this is just as a person that owns burial plots, I didn't know after 60 years, it says term, that after 60 years, it goes back to the city.
Yes, that is actually something that I believe is in state code, that, um, and, and you, there's a lot of stipulations. If, if we, the only way that we would re, we would ask for that plot back, it's only if there is no family that we can, we can't identify whose plot that is. If you were gone and you had all of your plots still there and we didn't know where you were or where any of your family was, and there's extensive noticing that has to happen before we can claim those plots again. So, it's not just 60 years, it's ours back. It's a lot of noticing and a lot of research to make sure we, there's no way that we could find anyone who could legally claim the right to those plots, so.
You don't, my dad was the last living relative of my grandpa and he had plots. And it was like, if he passed, then we had to get every relative in the next line to sign. And it was really, really about two or three months before my dad passed, we were trying to make sure all these plots were put together because we were worried about, and this, this isn't harem and this isn't sanity, this is salt, it's like, like cemetery. We're trying to gather everything in because, but I was surprised, just, I didn't know we had 60 years, because I'm going, okay, I've got to start counting from when I bought it if I'm gonna die in time.
It's been about 30 years.
I, I do get quite a few questions about that, and so, I've had to explain that to people.
I got 30 more years.
I've got 30 years left.
Helen, you know, like I say, people can always put them into their trusts and then there's, there should be a trustee who could come in and say, I'm the trustee, and then they could handle those, those kinds of cemetery transactions. So, it's only gets tricky when, when we can't find anyone who is the legal owner to those plots.
And we can, I just wanted to show you the Mark Thompson. If we're, something that's interested, we'd have to discuss that in a closed session if we wanted to do something there, but.
Yeah.
Kind of talk on that, so.
More cemetery land is always good. Okay. I think that's all we had for you tonight. Do you, counsel, do you have any further questions or concerns? Any thoughts that?
No, but I want to tell the, the staff there at the cemetery, thank you. We're heading into the hard time of the year and hopefully, now, if we were members of council, I believe we've authorized, authorized uh, some new equipment to go in there to try to help so we don't damage up the cemetery, as well as we have some new mats that are gonna be going on. And Erin, I think you mentioned we were able to hire, we, we'd had an opening for quite some time for the weekend, but we've been able to find some.
For about a year, we had an opening for a weekend cemetery person. We filled that position and one of our, um, seasonal employees is also now helping us on the weekends, um, for that. So, it helps relieve so that our full-time guys aren't there all of the time. We still have at least one, I should say, but, um, it has been a help, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We'll bring back, um, more information for you later and for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I apologize, we've ran a little bit late. We had a work session that started at 6:00. We're gonna take a five-minute break before we go into city council. It was gonna start at 7:00, so city council will start right around about 7:10 tonight.
Two years ago. I have, I have 10 plots, because I've got part of my family mess and I don't think they're available.
This is like family Zoom time?
Oh, did you know it's the last day or going to get in and it's perfect? It's perfect!
There is no sign-up sheet. We'll just have the people come up. Just waiting on one council person to come in.
What's that?
We want to welcome you out to the December 6, 2022 Highland City Council meeting. It is now 7:11 PM on, on that Tuesday. We would like to go ahead and begin our city council meeting with, with the invocation by council member Sarah Peterson, followed by a pledge of allegiance of council member Tim Ball.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful that we can meet here and have such participation from residents. We are thankful for the residents of Highland and for the beautiful place in which we have to live. We pray that we will all be respectful and that we will listen and that we will make wise decisions and keep in mind the needs of our residents. We thank thee for thy many blessings and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand in token of pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have, uh, set apart for unscheduled public appearances, but I'd like to go through on the agenda for the items that we will allow for public comment during the agenda item. Item number four, which is a public hearing for the public, the, the resolution for the garbage rates. We also will be having a public hearing for the protection of private property. We will then be also allowing for public comment on, so you, you can wait, I would recommend you wait till the time when it's, uh, that agenda item. We, I will allow for public comment at the time when we discuss the daycare preschool and in-home instruction, as well as item number nine, which is an action resolution of an inter-local cooperative agreement with Utopia. Other than that, there will be, if you're here on any other item, I'd recommend that you come up during the unscheduled public appearances. Before we begin with that, I'd like to invite David Stewart to please come up. Uh, David is a Highland resident, but Highland City had hired David as a consultant uh, for some special grants and things that way, so I'd like him, maybe, if you could maybe share with the council some updates on the grants. Could you, would you mind, there's a button, if you push, it'll go to green light.
Where it says push. Perfect. Uh, David Stewart, yes, so, as you'll remember now, it's been several months ago, uh, came before you with the opportunity and the idea of, uh, pursuing a ARPA grant with the state that they were prioritizing for local governments. They had set a cap of a million dollars. Uh, worked with Andy and his team to identify a project that would be qualified, uh, to apply for, uh, then applied for that project and because the state's not nearly as efficient as city government, it is now, you know, in December, and they finally have gotten to the point of, uh, awarding those, uh, grants. And Highland City, talking to Andy, received in the last day or so, an email confirming award of the million-dollar grant and to start the contracting process to facilitate. and to start the contracting process to facilitate that grant. Now, mind you, that'll still take some time because they're extremely slow, but it's done at this point. Now it's just going through the details of finalizing a boilerplate contract. So, you know, very exciting news that we're able to work through that and excited to make that announcement.
So for the public that's here tonight, can you tell us what the grant is for?
If you don't mind, I would bungle it up, but Andy much more can better describe what that was, what we ended up applying for.
The grant that we applied for was funding to help us pay for the wellhouse for our new big well on 1120, or 11200 North.
Culinary water.
Culinary well and to facilitate additional improvements to the culinary system, including being able to put us in a position to where we will be able to chlorinate our water when we choose to go forward that way and also some improvements on some of the real high pressures that we have at the south end of the city. So kind of a culinary package that we put together and we're really excited about the opportunity to receive the funding. It's a real neat opportunity for the city and we're grateful that we were selected.
Thank you very much for all your work on this.
David, we appreciate, so the public's aware, we actually entered into, I guess, a consultant agreement for one year and so we appreciate it. Within four months, we've gotten one grant and so we plan on working with you on some other projects here throughout the year and so we're excited to start earmarking, see if there's some other grant projects we could have you help us with.
And talk briefly, Andy, I think come back probably in January, kind of pre-session and kind of talk through some of the priorities and ideas as things start to firm up a little bit ahead of the session and do that. But just happened to the timing of this council meeting, kind of came right on the top of that award announcement and so thought we'd, in talking to Andy, come forward, make sure to let the public and the council know that we were successful. So appreciate again your confidence and willing to take a risk and, you know, I'm excited to say, you know, at least on my side, it's certainly paid off and I'm, you know, can maintain my batting average, so very happy about that.
For the residents, maybe if it's okay Dave, I'm going to kind of share a little bit about one of your hobbies. If you've ever went, there's a church on 6000 West, what is it about, what is it about 11100 North?
Yeah, the address is 11671 North.
So there's a house that has a lot of Christmas lights that are all decorated that you can go that park, that church parking lot and see. That's Dave's house. So this is your Christmas light guide and I appreciate, I stopped in last week, I think about nine o'clock and saw him out there with his headlamp, still trying to get everything up. And I believe on Saturday, you turned your lights on to Fanfare and I stopped by on Monday night. It was, it's a great show. So appreciate, I think that also adds the flavor in.
Yeah, no, we kicked off Saturday, it'll run through the rest of the year every night and so excited about that and for people to come and enjoy them, so.
Can I make just one more comment? So I think for the public, our general fund budget has run between about 10 and 13 million over the years. So million dollar grant is really helpful, even though it goes into utilities and things, but that's still a significant amount.
A million dollars.
Awesome. Well, thank you again so much.
Okay, we will now take time for unscheduled public appearances. If you're here for anything that I did not state that we'll be having public comment on, I'd like to invite you to please come up at this time. If you'll please keep your comments to three minutes and just kind of direct it to the council on that. So at this time, I'll go ahead and I'll open it up for public comment if anyone would like to come up and address the city council.
My name is Pam Redman. I reside at 9847 North, 6130 West and my property backs up to Canal Boulevard, which is a little bit west of 6000. Would my neighbors who are here for this issue, please raise your hand. So I, you know, we have a lot of people with concerns about this road. Since the road was completed and the traffic commenced, my family and others have been distressed by the speeding and traffic noise coming from Canal Boulevard. We are deeply worried about the safety of young children who live on this road and tend to amble freely like sometimes they did before the road was not so busy. My husband and I have spent many hours on this road taking speed tests with a speed gun and noise studies. Indeed, there are times when the speed is much higher than posted. Usually this is around eight in the morning, between one and five in the afternoon and on Friday, Saturday and late Sunday evening. I mean, late, like 11 to 12, speeding going on. I'm sure many of my neighbors can attest to this. Thank you. We are assaulted by the constant roar of traffic from the rough chip seal pavement behind our house and others are too. It is considerably louder than the smooth asphalt on the west end of Canal Boulevard. Traffic noise is plainly audible inside our home and disturbs our sleep. Our homes have a minimal setback from the road and we do not have the luxury of soundproofing concrete walls between our homes and the road. Ours is a residential neighborhood, but Canal Boulevard has made it seem more like an SR92 corridor. Many of our front doors or back bedrooms are directly on this road. The noise, traffic and danger of it has always reduced our quality of life and I believe it's already affected our home values negatively. We would like to propose the following to help remedy the problems and I think you may have received this in your, okay.
So there was an email earlier today that I believe that came from you and your husband, correct?
You received it later than they did. I apologize. We thought we should send this to the mayor. But to improve safety, we would propose that we decrease the speed limit on this road to 25 miles per hour, add active speed signs going both ways in the new subdivision, which is in Mitchell Hollow, add raised pedestrian crossings at Canal Madison at 6180, is that right? Mountain View Road and 6630 West. It's noted in these notes that we gave you. Some folks on the west end of Madison, in Madison, would like to see a four-way stop going there because of all the accidents that have been happening in that area. The people on my end that I've spoken to, some of them are not interested in speed signs, more stop signs because of the pollution. So to reduce the noise, we want it to also go down to 25 and we would like to see the rough chip seal replaced with a smooth asphalt covering. It would greatly decrease the decibels. Is that my three minutes? Thank you for your time and this opportunity. We have to come visit with you about this and we hope that you'll consider our proposals. Thank you.
If you'll please state your name, just so we get on the record.
John Redman, the lesser half. Okay, so basically there's three sections of the road, from North Country Boulevard to Alpine, from Alpine to 6000. 6000 to 6800. Okay, we're worried about the one, the west end. And the new subdivision has noise barriers, but the other two don't. They're the most homes, the ones closest to the road. And we have the chip seal that makes things noisy. Now explain that in a second, okay? Basically what we found, we ended up doing our own speed study and our own sound noise study, that's on this page here. Basically, the good news is we found the average speed, people are going about 33 miles an hour. But 40% of the drivers are going over 35 and 10% going over 40. On a Saturday, Friday and Saturday night, however, 80% of the drivers are going over 35 miles an hour. And that's day and night and that's noise. If you calculate, and I actually drove from 6100 to 6000 at 25 miles an hour versus 30, you basically lose 26 seconds. So we're arguing over 26 seconds on the speed limit, okay? And I want to talk about noise, which is a big deal. So I want to switch to your third chart, this one right here. The one that has noise limits, okay? Decibels can be kind of confusing. Basically, it's a way of measuring sound power. But sound power is actually exponential. The good news is, is so do our ears. Our ears don't perceive 10 times increase in power. Our ears only perceive that as twice as much. But our ears can actually perceive over a range of a trillion, from the quietest sound to the loudest. But we're getting closer, okay? So if you look at the bottom of this, 30 dB is rustling leaves. The neighborhood ambient, which is in the Highland, in the Highland ordinance, there's a nuisance noise ordinance, says that the neighborhood ambient at night, or the noise should not be more than 50 dB at night or 35 above ambient plus five. So that's actually 40 because the night ambient is 35. That's better than a library. Okay, if you drop, jump up here to 50, the Highland City ordinance at night is 50 and a quiet home is there. And then the daytime limit is about 55. That's our own city ordinance. The noise in our backyard is a 78 dB. That's just above a vacuum cleaner and just below a garbage disposal and food blender. Okay? That's where we are. Basically, every car that goes down the road violates the ordinance, the city noise ordinance, by four times louder than the ordinance during the day and eight times the ordinance during the night. Now, there's only two ways to decrease that noise. One is reduce the speed and the second one is to smooth the road because positive texture, the tires bounce. So if we were to go to smooth asphalt in that one section just west of 6000, we could reduce the noise by 4 dB and if we lowered the speed limit to 25, reduce it another four. That's 8 dB. That's a 44% reduction in noise from those two activities, which is probably the best we can do, reasonable cost. All right, so you can see our list of proposals. Pam talked about them, they're on your last page and you all have the PowerPoint. We are planning to meet with all the city council members during January to answer any questions on the detailed data.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up during public comment?
My name's Dane Hodson and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening. Couple of years ago, when we were going through this, when we knew the road was going to be punched through, we met with the city council numerous times, mayor, I've got some communication back and forth with you and then Ed Dennis from the previous council. And we talked through this and we knew this date was coming, that we'd need to talk through this. So we really appreciate the city council taking the time to be able to listen to us and consider the different options that would be available to us to be able to mitigate speed. That was the big concern that we had back then. So really, our ask on this is to be open to the suggestions and opportunities that we might have to be able to figure out how to best address this issue. Since the road has been punched through, just being out in front of our house, our house does face the front, or face the road and so, when we're out in front, conversations really can't be had because of the amount of noise is being made. And the speed is, now that I am a grandfather, the concern even grows greater when we have children that are out front playing and take the eyes off of them at any moment could turn to disaster. So again, the ask here is to work with us on what those options might be and appreciate the time to do so. Thank you.
Do I need to press any buttons or it's pressed? My name is Kyle Pettit and I live at the, on a corner, some of you know where I live, but 6642 South Madison Avenue. And just the last couple of weeks, I think I texted many of you or sent an email to many of you, we had an accident there. A car was coming and didn't stop at the stop sign and the car coming on Canal or Madison, they didn't have to yield, but it ended up T-boning a car coming out of there. So there's our accident number one happening there on that road, but I'm anticipating that we'll have more. I'm in agreement with Mr. Redman. We'd like to see the speed limit reduced if possible. Ideally, I would love to see a stop sign or speed bumps be put there. I know I've had conversations with some council members and past mayor on this topic and they mentioned that speed bumps could not be done because of the snowplows. But my relatives in Idaho, what they do there for that situation is in the winter, they have these big, heavy duty speed bumps that are portable and they remove them for the snowplow time. Is a possibility to think about, so I don't know what those cost or what have you, but I know that it is, that there are cities that have similar situations where they, they put in temporary speed bumps in the non-snowtime of the year, so. I'd be curious, I don't know if there's a conversation that can occur today, but we do want to sit down with a few of you and see if we can have a rational conversation to see what can and can't be done. So is that, what's the process to get a, formally get a?
What I'd recommend, I think after everyone gets done, we're talking on this, we're going to have our city engineer address a couple of things that we might be able to work with. And then I'd recommend in the beginning of the new year, we maybe start to set up some time to bring the residents in and meet with a couple of the city council at a time, those who might like to participate.
Okay, very good. Just of noteworthy, you'll see people, they're not used yet to there being a road going through there and so a lot of the kids are still rifling down there on their skateboards, their e-bikes or whatever toy it is, coming down there and still not stopping. So, you know, if, had that been a kid without a car, when that T-bone happened, it would have killed him. Anyway, thank you very much for your consideration. We look forward to meeting with you, so.
Hey, my name's Dan Campbell. I live over by Kyle Pettit, at the, near the intersection, just one house away from it, of Madison and 6630 West. I'll give you a copy of what I'm going to say here and probably skip a little bit of it, but I do hope that we can have further conversations about this. It is a real problem. I lived in the neighborhood for 17 years. By the way, it's our 37th ward Christmas party tonight, so you're seeing an under-representation from the folks that live right there on the west end of Madison. They're all doing higher things. I'm here, I'm here because I've seen two major accidents on Madison in the last few months since the road was connected. I was on the scene of both immediately after they happened. The first accident was a few months ago, right after the road opened. Down at the choke point, the pedestrian crossing down in the hollow, a younger man driving a full-size Dodge Cummins truck failed to successfully navigate the choke point and it wasn't an accident with another car per se, but he got disoriented, he swerved, he hit the concrete curving hard and it was catastrophic for his truck. It demonstrates it's a very dangerous spot. The second accident was last week at the intersection of Madison and 6630 West, right next to my home, next to Kyle Pettit, Joe Larson. Two young ladies were the drivers, the car turning off of 6630 West onto Madison obviously did not see the westbound car and she was T-boned, okay? She would have stopped had she seen that car. That's what we all do. That's what we do when we learn to drive. I'm sure the authorities involved will point out that the drivers made mistakes and that's exactly my point. Okay? There's no room for error on this road there. Whether it's snow, ice, rain, the hill curves, bad visibility, speed, texting, kids, dogs, joggers, bikers, distraction, young drivers, whatever, all of those factors matter and it's clear that we've got a problem there on Madison Avenue. And the two most dangerous places I've just pointed out are the choke point, where the pedestrians cross down to the bottom of the hollow and then you've got a Speedway, a walled Speedway that connects them, but it's still on a curve. And then you've got the intersection at Madison and 6630. And I know you've got the speed cameras up and you've done the studies, but I'm telling you, I walk that road almost every day and at different times of day and over half of the drivers are over the lines because of the design. It's a residential road, it's curving and it's supposed to be really nice and feel residential, but it's nice and wide and so it invites the speed. And we, of course, are creatures of habit and we as a city have a duty to do something to help people that travel that road see and have an expectation that it's dangerous, that there are dangerous points. So other cities do the speed platforms. I know that that's not something we want to do. Some of us do want to do it. But at a minimum, at a minimum, we need to lower the speed limit to 25. That is our minimum. We've asked for that from the very beginning. We need to finish painting the lines on those intersections. There's no stop lines, stop lines painted where that young girl missed the stop sign at that intersection. where that young girl missed the stop sign at that intersection. And we can paint the, the curbing yellow with reflective. We can do a lot of things that I think are inexpensive that we should have done from the start. Anyway, thanks for the three minutes. Trying to keep it under that. I did time this, but thanks so much for, for letting me go a little bit longer. I hope that we can have further discussions about this. I think there are some rational, low-cost things that we can do, okay? Thanks so much for serving on the council.
I only brought five. You're fine. Thank you. Is there anyone else like to come up during public comment?
So I'm also talking, my name's Abigail Luasley. And I'm here about the road as well. My house backs up to the gully and the new Madison Avenue connection, the bridge. Sorry, I'm out of breath, I just stood up pregnant. So I see the benefit of having the road. I can get to Costco, I can get to things, that's great. But we need to have a lower speed limit. And we need to have a speed plateau or something to stop people from going so, so fast. There've been many nights, because my house is right there. We have no fence up, we have nothing to protect us from the sound. There's been many, many nights that I've been woken up at 2:00, 3:00 AM. And as a pregnant person, I don't go back to sleep, nor does my toddler. So it's been difficult for us. We've moved my toddler to the other side of the house. She still wakes up sometimes. She knows the word "race car" now because she says, "Why am I awake, mommy?" And I say, "There's a car outside being louder, like a race car." And it's, it's just not safe. We don't feel safe having her go in the backyard. It's, it's, cars go way too fast on the road. And the speed signs don't do much. I know people my age, my husband likes to play video games. It's like a number, see, ooh, how fast can I get the number to go up? And, ooh, it flashes red. It's not, it hasn't deterred, from what I've seen, it hasn't deterred cars from slowing down at all. And that intersection, the Mountain View intersection where it meets with Madison Avenue, there've been multiple times the, the like, distance that I can see isn't enough for me to be able to gauge how fast that car is going. So if I'm at the stop signs waiting to enter the road, as I normally would, I can't tell if I'm going to have to gun it, if I'm going to have to floor it. Once I get into the intersection, there've been two or three times that I've had to speed off to not get rear-ended by the cars that are going in excess of the speed limit. So it's just, it's, even if we're trying to be safe and follow the stop and everything, the other cars aren't. And so it has to change. We need something different. It's not working, so.
Is there anyone else like to come up and address the council?
Ed Kilgore, I live on the street. In fact, Dane, who spoke, is my son-in-law. I just want to say, we appreciate what you all do. And we know that there's always lots of opinions and lots of ideas. But I've been coming here for a number of years. I've owned, we've owned our home here 19 years. And I, I would suggest that you look at some of the old things that were talked about. And were by previous councils and mayors, out of hand rejected. I think 25 mile an hour is an excellent speed limit. When I mentioned that several years ago, it was pointed out that we had to be good neighbors to the other cities. And I would say, if you drive up Canal to where it crosses the street going to the high school, it's in Cedar Hills, it's 25 miles an hour there. And if you take the main road up through Cedar Hills, that curvy road, it has, it has speed bumps, and it's 25 miles an hour. So I think we should be as good as the neighbors are around us. American Fork has that beautiful road passing the junior high school, wider than ours and very well-constructed and marked, and it's 25 miles an hour. So my hope is that we'll find a way and a reason to change the speed limit on this road and it's safer. You get into my age group and you push that little button on your car that says cruise control. And then you just have to remember to put on your brake when you come to a stop sign. So that's the way I stay as close to 30 miles an hour. And I'll do, I'll do the same when it's, if you'll drop the speed limit to 25. We have to be conscious of, of our neighbors and the needs of all of us. And again, let me thank you for all you do. And I've spent, I've said too much already, thanks.
Joe Larson, I live at 6651 Madison Avenue. Appreciate you guys' time. I'm just going to reiterate what everybody else said. It is a problem. We've also been in almost two accidents ourselves, pulling out of our driveway since this new road went in. It's progressively gotten worse since the roads opened. People are learning, traffic patterns are changing. I worry about the day that the new neighborhood is done, and you've got 70 new homes coming into Madison. Something's got to be done. You know, I've got three teenagers, too, that are running around throwing the football in the front yard. And I'm worried for them. So I appreciate it. Please listen to what everybody's trying to say here. It is an issue, it needs to be resolved.
Anyone else during public comment? Seeing none, we will go ahead and now, at this time, close our public comment. I had asked, understanding there'd probably be several here about Canal Boulevard. I've talked with Andy Spencer, who is the city engineer, maybe about some things the city is doing or what might be able to do in the future. So Andy?
So, mayor and council, and for the residents, what the city has done in, in this budget year, the council will recall, we, we funded, early on, we were calling our traffic control toolbox. And the intent of that was to be able to study speed control and pedestrian safety throughout the city and to come up with a manual or a guidebook, if you will, whereby we can evaluate these types of concerns. With the busy construction season, we didn't get that out until recently. But the proposals are due back from the engineering firms next week. The council will see that in your January 3rd meeting for deliberation on which firm you would like to select. And those, that study or that process is slated to be due and completed by roughly about May 1st. Now, the idea behind that, when we did that, is that we had committed last year, actually, to some residents on the same corridor that live a little east of these folks, that we would study this corridor once it opened and use kind of settled down and we kind of got to quote-unquote "normal", that we would study this corridor and that we would come up with recommendations for traffic calming and speed control and safety. So as part of the engineer scopes for this study we're talking about, what they're to do is they're to work with the city staff and council to arrive at the, you know, conclusions of the study. And then they're to apply that study to this corridor from Canal, from North County Boulevard to 6800 West, study that corridor and help us arrive at the traffic calming and pedestrian safety changes, improvements, whatever, you know, wherever we land. But that process is underway. And that's, that's the timeline they're looking at. And so we are planning to study this corridor and address that. And so I apologize that we didn't get it out sooner. But like I said, we've been, had a lot of things moving this year.
Now, Andy, at one time with Canal Boulevard, as we talked, we had an accident a little bit further to the east on Canal Boulevard, you know, and we went and put in some signs to say, hey, you're speeding. I noticed coming to the west side, past 6,000 West, there's also one that's a, you know, like you said, that activates if you're going a little bit faster. Now, a lot of the residents are talking about some speed issues. Now, naturally, you know, I don't know if we always have to wait all the way for all the studies on something like that. But there was a question, I, one time, we thought there were some studies done on Canal to look at traffic and, and speed. But as we went back, we haven't been able to find that data that we?
Well, we, we did lots of data leading up to the road opening. And, you know, I, I thought that we had counted this section. And I think as I thought about it more, I think what we thought is, well, we're going to come and study it with this process that I just described. But we actually have our counters out there right now as we speak.
So some of you will notice, we went and put some counters there now. And is that at Madison, is that correct?
Yeah, one of them's just, just a little bit to the west of where the accident happened. And then we've got one that's kind of in, in between the two curves, in between where the pedestrian crossing is and before you, you know, make the bend to where the existing portion of Madison was. We have two counters out there as we speak.
What will the counters bring back? Does it only count? Will it give us speed?
It'll give us speed and the numbers of cars. So it'll give us the number of cars on, on a given day, the time of day that they went through, and the speed. So we'll know the traffic, the numbers of vehicles and the speed. And we'll have that data available here in just a couple of weeks. The, the study process I described is obviously a little bit longer. But that was kind of the, you know, this was going to be the first corridor that we focused on, you know, after we developed that process.
Scott?
So I would support having Olive Canal Boulevard 25 miles an hour. I'm affected by the portion between the Alpine Highway and North County. I purposely, I drive that road several times a day because I go to work that way. And I purposely drive 30 miles an hour for a couple of reasons. I have a target on the back of my car from the police department because I've given it.
Drives between 9:15 and 9:20 in the morning. It's not that we know, but.
But I do it mainly to see how many cars will back up behind me. Because everybody drives on this road faster than it's posted. And I think that's kind of human nature a little bit. But I would dare say on that portion, we're going 35 to 40 miles an hour at least. And so my feeling is, on the east end, if we've got Ridgeview developing, there's 689 residences, plus traffic from the high school, I, I think the whole speed limit needs to be dropped. But the problem is, is how do you enforce it? And I think we need to work with Lone Peak Safety and come up with their suggestions about how to enforce it. Because you can have low speed limits, but if you don't have enough staff or police officers or enough priority to enforce it, what good does it do? And, and I, one of the funniest, and I'll just be real brief because we've got a lot of things on the council tonight. But one of the funniest things that happened to me is I had one of my patients who lives in Cedar Hills and said, "You need to raise that speed limit there to 35, 40 miles an hour." And I said, "We'll think about that when you raise your side up." And, you know, so we've got a lot of people from other cities because we're such a good neighbor, who come and speed on our roads. And so I understand the concern of the people here because I have the same concern. And my neighborhood, even with the sound wall in the park, is incredibly noisy from people going up and down that hill. And I think it's going to get a lot worse before it gets better. So whatever we can do, but we need to work with Lone Peak Safety and figure out a way to enforce it. And, you know, if we need to hire more officers or whatever. But I think they need to be part of the discussion. Don't you think, Police William, or Chief William, that you need to be part of the discussion? I mean, we can, we can put all the speed limits in the city at 20 miles an hour, but somehow you've got to enforce it.
I agree with you 100%. We need to be part of that solution and part of that discussion.
Okay, so just for the residents that are here on Canal Boulevard, the recommendation is, if those, we'd like to set up some time. The council is desirous to hear from you. And so unfortunately, we're kind of with, with the Christmas season kind of heading in, the recommendation is maybe the first part of January, we'll set up some time as the council sees where their time is. So you can come if you want to go through presentations, talk with them one-on-one. We will, that's, I will plan on, you'd reached out earlier today and I'd mentioned that we'd set up with two. And so I'll, I'll reach out to your husband on that if you want to also reach out to the rest of the residents and they can come in. And again, we cannot, at, at this time, you know, as we start to go through this study, so on January 3rd, we have a, a traffic mitigation plans that we've asked some engineering firms. It's not just only in this one Canal area. We've had several areas where residents have come in and said, "Hey, we need some help," whether it be with speed or with other things. So we, we put it in our budget this year to do some studying, to come up with plans. We could put it in, saying, okay, this is what we'll do. And we've done a little bit up in the viewpoint area, saying, "Okay, we recognize with some traffic." That will happen January 3rd. It's, the bids will be awarded, and then they'll still have to come back with it. So that is a little bit of a time. The speed, like Scott's saying, something we could address earlier. But that's planned the first of January to start having some residents interacting with the council. And we'll kind of go from there. Is that okay? So that's just an update. Okay, we're going to now move on to item number 2A, which is a youth council report. Do we have a youth council here that's going to report on that?
So it, it seems like there was a scheduling conflict with that individual mayor, as it turns out. So I guess we can say we had a youth council retreat over the weekend, and I think it went very well. And looking forward to the, we're starting up the process, or midway through the process, council member Bills could speak to this about selecting our leadership for next year and getting going for 2023.
Just a question.
You also have, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, so those who have applied just for youth council, will you be reaching out to them and letting them know, like, the whole process and, and how to start and everything?
Yes, honestly.
For my daughter?
As you, as you know, we're, we're in between staff members, actually, which we'll talk about here in just a minute. And so there's been less communication than we'd like. And so we'll pick that up here shortly after. So I think you have more leadership interviews this week, is that right? Councilmember Bills?
Correct.
So we've been focused on them, but then we'll shift over to their general youth council after that.
Okay, thanks.
So, no, we had a, I, I was able to participate with the youth council activity. It was fun. I will let everyone beware that Grog won every game. They did not kill the Grog, so.
It was a very exciting game of like midnight hide and, hide and seek, freeze tag. Aaron and I watched, Mayor participated.
And only one table was broken in the process.
Couple bruises were happened. But no, we had a really good youth activity. Did you want, want to introduce or talk about what we're doing with the youth council at all?
With our events position? I would love to, if that's okay, Mayor. We weren't sure if we could put this on the agenda or not. So Robin, do you mind coming up? Mayor and council, I'm happy to introduce you to Robin Wise. You may, you probably already know her. She is married to Carrie Wise, who is on our beautification, who is our beautification committee. Let's be honest. And Robin has been a longtime friend of Highland City and will, we're crossing Ts and dotting Is, but looking forward to having her step into the role as the events coordinator for Highland City.
Very excited to be here. This is going to be fun.
Now, what part of Highland? Where, where do you live in Highland right now?
Well, when we first moved here to Highland, we lived in Alpine Country Club for, what, 20? Yeah, a little over 20 years. Now we live up, up Highland Boulevard before you get to Draper, Dry Creek Estates up there.
Just there on the left.
Just there on the left, on the corner. So for those of you did the home tours, So for those of you did the home tours, Carrie, and I don't do yard work, it's all him, had a very beautiful backyard that he did in the home tours this past year.
Well, we look forward to getting to know you a little bit better and having you work with our youth council and with our events.
Well, thank you, excited.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to agenda item number three, which is our consent item. We have consent item number A, which is approval of the meeting minutes of, of September 20th, October 4th, October 18th, and a work session on November 24th, as well as item number 3B, which is an ordinance, the 2023 City Council regular meeting schedule. Any of those need to be polled or are you ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Highland City Council approve consent items 3A, including the minutes from September 20th, October 4th, October 18th, and the work session on November 29th, without any amendments to those. And also approve the ordinance, 2023 City Council regular meeting schedule.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Scott, second by Brittany. We do not have electronic voting, so I'm just going to do a voice roll call. Tim? Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
That passes five to zero. Because I, I am going to move a, a couple of items around, if that's okay with staff. I'm going to move item number seven, which is an ordinance and tax amendment for daycare, preschools, and in-home instruction, now up to be the next item. So, do we have Kelly, are you going to be able to present that? So we are now going to be discussing the daycare preschool and in-home instruction, its ordinance and tax amendment.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Sorry, give me just one second. Okay, so the council has seen this request before. The first time this came to the council was on October 4th, just as a communication item. But during that meeting, during the unscheduled public appearances, we did have a resident come and speak to the council, sharing her concerns for the need of affordable childcare. And the mayor and council, during our communication item, we kind of gave some background as to why this amendment was needed. And the council directed staff to move forward with drafting an ordinance that was based on Lehigh City's code. We looked at a couple of different codes and regulations, and that seemed to be the most in line with where the council was wanting to head. On November 1st, this was presented to the city council after having received a recommendation from the planning commission. The council did review the planning commission's recommendation and discussed a few items. I just included the ones that were most discussed, I guess. Maximum number of children, possibly adjusting that. There was also discussion about removing type one and type two for daycares. And then whether or not to require background checks for in-home instruction or for preschool instructors. And then also agreeing to require at least one parking stall per addition, or per additional employee for the home occupation. In discussing these, the city council decided to continue the item to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, directing staff to get more research as the council members felt that they didn't have enough research or information to be able to come to a conclusion. A little bit of background again, why this initially came up. That resident that spoke during unscheduled public appearances actually submitted for a home occupation license. And they submitted for a daycare with eight to 16 children and one caregiver that did not live in the home, recognizing that although we have approved these in the past, it doesn't meet current city code. And so staff determined it was necessary to update code based on the request. Recognize, in the staff report, it was very lengthy, and I know that. We tried to do our best to keep the planning commission's recommendation in there and the initial staff review in there. And then, in addition, add the additional research that we did over the last month or so, over the last time we saw you. So we did not update the ordinance that's in the staff report. We kept the original recommendation from the planning commission. And then based on the new research, if the council decides to change numbers or adjust regulations, then the council can do so. We just have to clarify it in the motion. So just to give a, I'll try to make a very quick overview of what the ordinance is. We, basically, you have one group, that's daycares, which is anything, any care of children, of children that's longer than four hours. And then you have in-home instruction, which includes residential preschools, which is anything that's less than four hours. And so looking at daycares, you have, they're required to meet all home occupation regulations, except that caregivers are not required to live in the home, which would just mean that they'd be able to have those additional employees that are required by state code, depending on number of children and ages of those children. And then they'd have to follow all the Utah Department of Health and Human Services. They'd have to receive their licensing. And then we, the council also agreed to require that they, or the planning commission recommended, excuse me, to require a traffic flow and parking plan for all daycares. And then, like I said initially, they were separated into type one and type two based on number of children, trying to kind of address different impacts. I bolded it just because that was something that the council discussed to possibly eliminate. And then anything that had more than 12 children would be a commercial use and would not be permitted in a residential zone. Like I said, the type two daycares, that's where we added additional requirements when we were, when the council was discussing eliminating type one and type two. We also discussed keeping these two regulations, as in not having another within a quarter mile radius of another daycare preschool with, well, just in general. And then one off-street parking space per caregiver. That in-home instruction for preschools, all home occupation regulations would be required. That max number of 12 students, subject to change, per day, provided that no student attend for longer than four hours. Again, that purpose is to keep anything less, or more than four hours to be receiving their state childcare licensing. And then at least one teacher or instructor involved in the in-home occupa, or in-home instruction, excuse me, would have to live in the home. So you couldn't just have someone else coming to someone's house and running a preschool or running piano lessons or dance lessons, whatever have you. And then the staff and planning commission were recommending the background checks for instructors that have students that are under 18 years old. I'll show the research behind that in a moment. And then the same thing, any more than 12 students would only be permitted in commercial zones. Currently, in our residential professional zone, daycares and preschools are already permitted. In our professional office zone, the proposal is to add daycares because preschools were already permitted as a conditional use. This was our overall research regarding, we lumped this all together, so daycares, preschools, and in-home instruction, to kind of get an understanding as far as numbers go and how often these classes were being taught. We just included the types of home occupations, whether they're preschool, daycare, or other type of dance or music lessons. These were blocks per day, max number of children at one, at any one time, total number of children per, per day. So you just take the max number of children, times of, whatever their number of blocks were per day. And then number of employees, that's not including the homeowner. So when you have zero, it just means the only teacher is the one that lives in the home. And then this is how many times they did it for, per week. The average comes out to 4.2, so about four days per week is typical. And then these are the ones that we have record of or know of or did research on that do not have Highland City licenses. That's why you have a couple unknowns. But it was just to get some general numbers of more that we didn't have official record of. And so these averages included the numbers of ones that have Highland City licenses and those that don't. So average maximum number of children at one time came out to a little over 11 children. And then average total number of children per day came out to be 18. The background checks, I want to thank Candace on this. And I, Erin, do you mind texting her, telling her to come in? I'm so sorry, I forgot to text her because this switched. Okay. But as far as background checks, Candace actually reached out to and called all of these cities, trying to figure out what they did for similar licenses involving minors. I'll just go through them really quickly. Alpine doesn't do any sort of background checks for these. American Fork doesn't do formal background checks, but they do have their police department look at the applications that involve children. Cedar Hills does do background checks. Draper does, and they also require planning commission approval for childcare services or any type of personal instruction. Eagle Mountain does, and it's just for any business license involving minors. And so that's including, which, yeah, it includes commercial business licenses. Lehigh does not at all. Saratoga Springs does, and then Vineyard also does not at all. And then we also wanted to note, so all of these cities that we contacted require the name check. They didn't require fingerprinting. And then Candace contacted Lone Peak Police to see the expense or how much it costs to get a background check through them. And they charged $10.25 per card. And then through BCI, if you went directly through them, fingerprinting costs $15 for up to three cards. I asked her to call him back and to see what the cost would be without fingerprinting. And they said that they, they require a fingerprint anytime you come in, but then you select which type of background check they do. And so if you select the more extreme one, that would be like throughout the country, then they will run the fingerprint. Otherwise, they just do a name check, but they're still going to take your fingerprint. And so there was no change in cost based on different type of background check. And then we just have a couple motions. The motion to approve would be approving the way the planning commission initially recommended. And then there was also an additional, we talked about this a little bit last time, but just in case you forgot, the planning commission discussed and majority ruled in saying, yes, we want to allow different, or outside employees for daycares and in-home instruction. And then it didn't make it in the motion. And so just clarifying, if you want to add that, that would be how you would word it, is the second one right here. And then the alternative motion would be motion to approve, basically with the following changes. And then we just give you a couple of points based on the discussion on November 1st. And that is it.
Okay. Can we ask questions?
Yes, you can.
In our discussion a month ago, there was a lot of discussion about the number of children. And we're kind of lumping preschools and daycares together. I think it's a little more clear cut with the daycare. And the planning commission was saying maximum of 12 unless you're in a commercial zone. Am I, do I understand? There was some discussion increasing that maybe to 16. What, I don't know how that affects preschools because as was in our discussion before, we actually have one of our residential preschool owners here with us. Maybe she can address this. But most preschools, if I understand right, do two sessions a day. And so if we're limiting a total of 12 all day, or can you have 12 in each session? I, I've never been clear about what the discussion was on that because I think we've talked about 16 per session and, and different things. So what's the recommendations? Is it 12 total? Or can you divide it into eight and eight and have 16 total for preschool? Or, or can you have 12 and 12? I mean, what was the, kind of the determination?
So with what, how it's presented in the ordinance right now and with the planning commission's recommendation, it was just 12 for, 12 per day maximum.
Be six and six, if you had two sessions.
Right. And I mean. From a staff standpoint, we wouldn't, we wouldn't recommend a certain number. All we would prefer, if you would, can do it this way, is to approve a maximum number per day rather than doing it in time blocks. It would just be easier to regulate. And when you put a maximum of time blocks, when you, we're, like you said, we're lumping preschools and, say, piano lessons in one group. Where piano lessons, you may have five lessons a day and only five people, but that's five time blocks, if that makes sense. And so if we just do a, like, just a maximum number per day for all of it, it would be.
But usually for a daycare, people will bring their children in the morning and then they stay some hours, probably much longer than a preschool. If you have two sessions of preschool, it seems like there's more people coming and going. I just would like to clarify what you're recommending.
Just to clarify too, daycares are separate, or are separate from the preschools and in-home instruction. So if, if you think it appropriate, you could have a different number for daycares and a different number for preschools.
It seemed like they were lumped together in the ordinance.
Which you can also divide them out. It was just how we originally proposed.
That helps me understand.
Okay, just to follow what, because what, in, in what the motion here, what they're saying, hey, look what the planning commission, the planning commission said all daycares are required to provide a traffic flow and parking plan. The maximum number of children allowed in the residential daycare would be reduced to 12. And that's where the council's talked in the past. We, we talked about maybe opting that number from 12. The next item, number three, was regulations that the number of caregivers be limited to the minimum required by the state be removed. What does that mean? The regulations that the number of caregiver is limited to the minimum required by the state be removed?
Oh, the point of that was just saying, because remember how the, the state with the daycare, the number of caregivers that they require is all based on age? And so it was mainly just saying, you know what, as long as they follow state regulations, we as a city don't really have to deal with regulating number of employees, just because the state's going to take care of that.
Then the item number four was in-home instruction, including residential preschools, be allowed a maximum of 12 students per day, provided that no students attend longer than four hours. Once again, so if we, if we approved everything, the planning commission has the 12 in there. So if the council wanted to entertain a different number, they'd have to include that in their motion, correct? Is there other things, if we're looking at a motion, we need to make sure was included? Was the quarter mile, it was not, I don't see that.
By two.
Or the, the other types, the type one, type two, and the quarter mile, I think, was not part of the planning commission motion?
It, it was, but specifically for type two. And so I.
Daycare.
Right, for daycares.
That's great, eight to 12, what they recommend when you have more kids, a type two.
So we need to discuss that. We need to allow about the, allow employees for in-home and the off-street. And I think we also need to talk about the number we were talking about, correct?
So, can I, a quick question, and I'll let, turn, time where it came. So when you talk about a traffic study, would the person that's involved with the daycare preschool, would they come up with a plan? Because that's always the issue in the city. Because we have kind of a parade of citizens coming in either complaining about speed limits or traffic, like we've had, or the other corollary, which is when people have home businesses, that there's traffic issues. I mean, and we sit on the council and hear this all the time. So how, how would you work with him to come with a, they'd have to come with a plan and then you'd make a lot of suggestions or?
Right, it would just, yeah, traffic flow and parking plan. If we had any questions or they were requesting anything that was outside of typical, like, public street laws, we'd definitely work with the police department and the fire department to make sure that they were aware of it. I know that that's something that they did for an existing preschool, is reviewed their traffic flow plan.
Do you ever work with Lone Peak Safety, like the fire department? If you need to get a fire truck in, how many people can be parked or, you know? It seems a little more complicated than, yeah.
Yeah, I honestly, it's mainly based on impact. And so when you have someone that is requesting to have 20 kids in one day, we would want to be sensitive to those neighbors that are adjacent to the daycare or preschool. And just make sure that we're trying to, while also encourage the licensee to encourage their, the parents, you know, to follow these traffic flow patterns.
Okay, council, if there, is there not any questions? I would like to, this is one I mentioned that I would allow, allow some public comment. So on, on this item, I'd like to invite, if there's anyone here that's here about a tax amendment to the daycare, preschool, and in-home instruction, I'd like them open up for public comment. If you'll please keep it to three minutes and keep it. If someone's talked about it already, let's try not to repeat that aspect. So if there's anyone here that'd like to address specifically on the daycare amendment, you're welcome to come up.
Hi, friends.
If you'll please state your name.
My name is Molly Dean. I do have copies of an email that I sent earlier today. And I can read it from what I wrote earlier. Yeah. I've had a preschool in Highland, Bear Hall preschool, for over 23 years. So your new thing that you're trying to pass would probably not affect me as far as I'm grandfathered in, and I have another year before I'm going to retire. But I'm here to stand up for any other person who in the future may want to do what I've done. And what a gift it's been to Highland City and to me, and to the thousand, over thousand of children that I've taught. To reduce that number, like what you're talking, to 12 a day, would not be worth it as a teacher to open a school. It would not be cost-effective, time-effective, any way effective. I don't even think it would be effective to the children themselves to be in a program where they don't have enough students to make a peer growth, social aspect to that program. I have students come from Highland and every other surrounding city, Alpine, Cedar Hills, Draper, American Fork, and Lehigh, Pleasant Grove. And I've never had to advertise. And I think when I started 23 years ago, there was a real lack of early education, which I feel is very vital to children. And I think you can look at the statistics and see that those children that had early education graduate from high school and go on to do a lot of great things. So I'm here today to just tell you, I think you need to really, before you pass something that could impact the future, that I think you really need to be aware of what those numbers would do. And it would basically destroy any private home in preschool. Effectively, that's what it would do. destroy any private home in preschool. Effectively, that's what it would do. I have between 14 and 16 students in my school in every session. I have another full-time employee that I hire. And I feel like it's a perfect number. That's my opinion, but that's 23 years of an opinion. And I agree, and I fully support Highland City with your traffic flow and your pattern, which I have done. I did it when you first required it, probably 15 or so years ago. And I redid it a few years ago because of a complaint in my neighborhood. As a resident of Highland City, I truly am really aware of not wanting to impact my neighbors and being a good citizen. And I think I've done that. Officer Brooks came and walked through with me to facilitate this change with the traffic in my neighborhood. And I think it's worked just fine. We're talking about five to 10 minutes of traffic, you know, during the day when it's a little bit heavy. And so anyway, my time's up. If you have any other questions, or if you have not read the email, I have some copies here. I just want you to know I'm advocate for education for children. And it's a beautiful thing. Highland City needs to keep that. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Because I was working today and didn't see your email. So are you advocating somewhere between 14 and 16 per session, two sessions a day?
I am.
How many days do you teach?
Every day.
So you're talking about five days a week?
I am. And you know, that's, that's someone like me that wants to make good use of my time. Because I feel like for the work and preparation to do it for six kids, three times a week, it's, yeah.
How long are your sessions?
Two hours or two and a half hours, depending on the age of the child.
Because I'm always at work. So, you know, I've seen the traffic on my days off, but it's not been bad.
And I work my traffic so that it, it comes after the school buses leave. And so there's not traffic when people are coming, going to work, coming home from work, or school buses are coming in and out of my neighborhood. So I'm aware of those kinds of things. And I think it's great for the city to make some guidelines, background checks, whatever that you feel to keep kids safe. I talked to a dear friend, Von Keach, when I opened my school, about the legality of my school. And he gave me some amazing advice. And I did everything that he said. And I followed every other Highland City protocol through the years, including talking to my neighbors before I started. All those things are good. I just would hate to see you pass something that would eliminate the opportunity to have someone bless children's lives like I've been able to do. I think it's, passing this resolution for a maximum of 12 kids a day would definitely prohibit that.
Can I ask a question?
I have a more quick question. Why don't we, it's okay if I have to-
Okay, sure.
What are the alternatives for preschool education?
Public.
So, and I, how many venues or locations are there for public preschool education?
I think there's probably three or four. And people always ask me, what do you think about those? And I would say, well, if you have no other opportunity, go for it. And so when people can't get into my school, some of them, I direct that way. They don't have that in-person feeling. They don't have outside play. They don't do field trips. There's a lot of difference. They don't have parent participation. You have a city council member here that can tell you exactly how it is. And there's a big difference between a public preschool.
I had an interesting experience trying to get my children into, into preschool. And it was at Ridgeline Elementary. And there's a limited number of spots and they're in high demand. And I thought, man, I've got this down. I can tap, type fast. And I entered everything in under a minute. And I was on the waiting list. Literally under a minute. I, I, they said, go. Like, I can't remember, two o'clock in the, whatever it was. At 2:01, it was full. I called up, I said, what's going on? And they said, well, we're in high demand. And, and I fortunately got the kids in. But I, I understand the need for, for what you do. And I appreciate what you do.
Yeah. I get calls for baby Smith when a parent finds out they're pregnant. And I'm not kidding. But not that I want to say, oh, look at me. But it's hard. There's a need. There truly is. And parents want to have a safe, quality program for their children. To start kindergarten anymore, not being able to read or knowing things, your child is, is at a lack. And so I feel like there's a big need.
Oh, I, I just wanted to get your opinion, Molly, about the quarter mile difference, if you had two preschools in the same neighborhood, or preschool and the daycare. We're just trying to figure out traffic issues. What's your opinion about that?
I could see that that would be problematic.
Yeah.
I think, I think daycare, like you said, that's been mentioned, people, when they do daycare, it's usually for a working parent. And so they would drop that child off probably seven or eight in the morning. So the traffic flow would be completely different from what I do. Because those kids ultimately usually stay all day, or most of the day. But I could see it could be problematic. My neighborhood, that kind of is a dead end. There's problems because, you know, you're not having an easy way in and out. And so if you had two of them in close proximity, I could see that that could be problematic.
So you wouldn't be opposed to the quarter mile?
I wouldn't.
That planning commission recommended?
But I also have a dear neighbor that's an amazing mother, that tried to look at a daycare for her own children, because she's a physical therapist, thinking that maybe that might be an option for her children and a few others. And she looked and told me there are no daycares in Highland City limits. At least, that's what her finding was. Maybe it is different. She, of course, lives closer than a quarter mile. But if there are indeed no daycares in Highland City limits, that's a sad thing, too. We need to make that for working moms that have a lot of education and a great career. They need to have a safe, good place for their children if they need to work. So, thank you. Did all of you, does anybody need a copy of the email that I sent earlier?
It's in my email. I just were, was working all day, so I haven't read the email.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to come up and address the council concerning?
Hi. This is kind of scary. Oh, my gosh. Okay. My name's Amber Connect. And I run a kid fit preschool, just right behind Freedom Elementary in that little, anyway. We have a turf room on the back of our house. And I just, in thinking of these things, I totally agree with what she said. Everything she said is like exactly perfect. But there's a couple little different things that maybe I could add to it. First off, what she said with the 12 kids, that's just not enough kids. I have classes Monday and Wednesdays just in the morning. And there's just 10 in each class. But then Tuesday, Thursday, I have two different sessions. And there's 10 in each of those with an hour break in between. So there's really not a lot of traffic. I also agree with finding a way for the road and the house to be accessible. And I do have a roundabout in front of my house. So the parents just pull in, drop their child off and pull out. So I, that is definitely a good thing. Also, before I got my license, I had to send letters to all my neighbors. And they were fine with it. So I do think that if that is something that needs to still happen, that's great. Making sure that the neighbors are okay with it, that is a really good thing, too. Also, something else I was thinking about is if you reduce it to 12, that's so few numbers, it makes it not worth it. And I do know that there are a lot of moms, including like the dance things you've listed in the daycare, that you are using this for their extra income, including me. And so if you're reducing it to 12, it doesn't make it super worthwhile for that few of kids. And then it's meaning those moms that are stay-at-home moms with their children would have not that way to provide for their families with the extra income. So that's something a little bit more to think about if you limit that. That's something to kind of add in. Also, I did work at another preschool that was like a building preschool. It was actually like a commercial preschool. And it was awesome. But something that I thought was maybe a little different was that they were charging between $2.50 and $300 a month. And I knew that because I worked there, which I feel like is a lot for preschool. But if that's what you want to do, that's great, too. But if you're a mom doing it from your home, or you're just doing something, you can charge less. Like I charged 95 a child. And it's been great. I do more of an active learning. So it's a lot of running and playing and hula hoops and parachutes and all that kind of things because we do have the turf room. So those are just some maybe different things to kind of think about as you're thinking through this. But if you'll just maybe consider that 12 is not very many kids to, for all the work that it takes to be a preschool teacher. So that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Is there a discussion or proposed motion?
I want to talk a little bit about this since I feel like maybe on council, I have a little bit more experience in this area, since my youngest just stopped going to preschool last year.
So when we talked about the cemetery, you looked towards me and Scott.
100%.
So for the daycare, well-
Don't even come, yeah. You're not even there. Yeah, way past, down the road.
I'll have you know, my kids went to preschool.
So long ago.
Yes. They're in their 30s now. Yeah.
But, so long ago. But I actually had all four of my kids go to Ms. Molly's Bear Hall preschool. And I, I do have to say she is right. If the demand for preschool is extremely high, like Tim was talking about, the first thing when I found out I was pregnant with each one of my children, I would call my parents and say, I'm pregnant. And then I would email Ms. Molly and say, put baby Rodella on the list for your preschool, in hopes that they get in three or four years later. So it is such a high demand to find a preschool in your area that's affordable, close by. And as a city, why are we trying to put restrictions on this? 12 max a day, it's unattainable. It will take out every single preschool in Highland City. We will not have any. We will limit choices for our parents. We will limit education for our young kids. This is something that is not right for Highland. I think if we're talking about max kids per day, Ms. Molly said she does about 16 kids per session, two sessions a day, that's 32 max. That is something more that is, that's attainable for preschools and, and something that I'm more comfortable with. Instead of putting regulations on these, I think we need to instead look at ways of how we can embrace more of them. More daycares, more preschools. As far as traffic, to be honest, dropping off and pick up for preschool took no more than five minutes. And I can testify, that is no more than five minutes. Because if I was five minutes late picking up my kid, there are no more cars out in front of her house. It was gone. My kid was back in the house. Because that is how quick it took for those parents to pick up their kids and leave. So really, if you wanted to say that there was a traffic issue, you would need to look at your watch, know what time kids were being dropped off, picked up, go outside and then watch for it. And then you could say, yeah, maybe there's some issues there. But really, it, I've had a preschool five houses down from me, no idea that there's a preschool for the first five years I lived there. No idea whatsoever. So I think this needs to be worked on, for sure, the planning commission. I think one of them, in the report, actually, the planning commission, a few of them said that they didn't even see a need for daycare or preschools in our city, which is, just shows maybe they don't exactly have a, really a pulse on what our community needs. And maybe we need to do some changeups in our planning commission. But there is a huge need for it here. And putting 12 max on there is not going to happen in our city.
So I will disagree with Kim because I got my kid on a daycare list before I told my family I was pregnant. So, that is, that is a true story. Yeah, I agree. I think 16 per session is a much better number. We have to make it possible for these preschools and daycares to run. I love the idea of planning it around school bus drop-off times and things like that. I think that's super smart. And I would appreciate any provider who thought that far ahead. Have we talked about before the idea about sending letters that Amber said? Because that didn't seem like a horrible idea either.
Well, you talked about letters to the neighbors.
Uh huh.
I think we've been doing that.
Well, we have, but is that going to change as part of this?
So, where's Candace? Correct me if I'm wrong. We, we do it for all home occupations that involve some sort of customer coming to the home. And so with preschools and daycares, we have been sending out the notices. And we do the same for hair salons or nail salons or whatever people are doing that involve customers coming to the home.
So this text amendment would not affect that?
No.
Okay, that was one question I had.
Yeah, we'd continue doing it.
So council, is there a recommended motion or further discussion?
I always like to have comments. So I, I appreciate the discussion that's going on here. And, and I'm not opposed to having certainly 16 per session for preschool and up to 16 in a daycare. My concern, again, is always the traffic. And while it's five or 10 minutes, it usually is more than that. And I just think that we need to, in the stipulation, make sure that we have a good traffic plan. And I think sometimes on these higher volumes, that we need to also kind of work with the fire department. Because yes, it's only a few minutes during that period of the day. But if you had an emergency at that time and you can't get the emergency vehicle in because there's so much. So I really like the fact that Molly Dean says that she worked hard with the police and different things to schedule her preschool when the buses weren't there, which I think is critical. And when people are not going back and forth to work. And I mean, I've lived in that neighborhood. And except on Thursdays, I never see the traffic. And they've done a good job to regulate it. But I think we need to somehow kind of work with the things that she's done to make her successful and make sure we can kind of copy that in other parts of the city. Because, you know, again, I've been on the council a long time. And there's so many problems we have with home businesses and traffic. So if there's some way we can mediate that, I, I certainly support the 16 twice a day. I support having daycares and preschools. My kids went to preschools years ago. And, you know, I think they're very great value. I, I kind of would still kind of lean towards having some spacing, just because of traffic issues. Because again, it's not just a traffic issue, but it becomes a little bit of a, a safety issue, too. And, and so, and I don't know how to work through that totally.
Let's start looking at what the planning commission, is it, all daycares required to have a traffic flow and parking plan? Is there any issues with that? Is that-
No, I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
Is that already required or no? Because I know Amber did that also. And was it just one of those things she did on her own?
So that needs to be part of the-
We required it as staff based on a complaint that came up. And so it's just been a situational basis.
We should require them.
Okay, so that, if the council's meaningful, that needs to be, maximum number of children allowed in a residential daycare to be?
16.
Per session.
Now, is day, day, this is daycare, not preschool?
So daycare, you're going to be there all day. And I think maximum 16.
Following this, yeah. And following the state guidelines for how many, because it depends on how old they are. Like, some kids you'll just have after school or whatever.
Follow state guidelines.
Yep.
So the idea would be to remove type one and type two and just put a maximum of 16 per day for daycares?
Daycare.
Okay.
Okay. Now, what are we talking on preschools? Are we saying maximum day of 32? Is that?
I was going to ask real quick. Because the way, the way it stands right now, preschools and in-home instruction is lumped together. So if you're wanting to separate it out and say 32 max per day for preschools, and then a different number for in-home instruction, which is swimming lessons, dance classes, music lessons, et cetera. Or if you're okay with those uses, also having 32 per day?
Do you guys want to limit per session of 16? Or do you want to do a daily limit?
I, I would lean towards per session.
Yep.
Because I don't think you want to have 32 for six hours. Would you? I don't know. I don't, maybe-
Okay, is the rest of the council, I'm just trying to get, is the rest of the council okay with that 16 per session?
What do we have currently?
So currently, like I said, it's all lumped together. And we just have maximum of 12 students per day. We didn't, we don't have specific time blocks.
We don't have specific right now.
No.
What does the state have? What does, what does the state require?
The state doesn't have anything for preschools. And that's what we're discussing right now. Where it's just, as long as it's less than four hours, they don't regulate- four hours, they don't regulate anything.
So council, are you wanting to regulate if it's less than four hours to 16?
I just have to say, we have to be cautious of these things because last year there was a bill that was introduced that basically cities are putting restrictions and limitations on daycare and preschools. And so the bill that was introduced was actually putting restrictions on cities, on putting restrictions on these.
Specific on daycares?
Yeah, daycares and preschools. So that's something that is always on the radar because they're, they're looking at ways to provide more daycare, more in-home instruction. I think currently there's a need for 150,000 more daycares and there's only about 68,000 slots open for them. So there's a desperate need for them. And so that's one way that the state is looking at solving that problem, is looking to cities to stop regulating it, looking at their zoning and relaxing zoning to allow more daycares and preschools. So this is just something we have to be cautious as we start putting more restrictions on, the state will start looking at us.
Well, but I don't think these are unreasonable restrictions. I know what you're saying, but at the same time, we have residents that live in these neighborhoods. And so you can't have a daycare in every house with 32 students a day because, and then it's this parade of people complaining. So I, I'm totally supportive of it, but I think you need to have some guidelines. And if the state comes down and say you can't do that, then we'll change it. But it just seems to me 16 a session, isn't that what you've been doing all these years? It works well. And, you know, I don't know.
So Kim, you're favoring no, no limitation per session. I'm hearing Scott, council, I need to, just to help us get this moving along. Are you guys?
I think we need some guidelines.
Regulation or are you wanting to have 16 per session or a different number?
And as Kelly stated, if you were, if you feel comfortable with council, staff would prefer something like a per day limit, it's just easier than thinking about situations where there's sessions and things like that. So if you were comfortable with a 32 per day limit, that would be easier to regulate for staff.
So is this just for preschool, 32 per day limit?
Right now, it's grouped together. Preschools are grouped together with all in-home instruction, including fitness classes.
So if you have swim lessons.
It'd be allowed 32.
So if you want to distinguish to those, we would need to know that as well.
I would distinguish. I don't think we want a daycare with 32 kids in it.
Sorry. Daycare is separate.
Yeah.
Preschools and all other in-home instruction are in one, but daycare is separate from that.
Council, what's your feeling? Do you want to have 16 or do you want to have per day? Do you want it in session or day?
You could, sorry, I'm going to make a little suggestion. For, you could, in distinguishing between the two, like preschools and in-home instruction, you could just say for preschools, no more than 32 per day with a maximum of 16 at one time. And then just have maximum of 16 for all the rest of in-home instruction.
I support that.
But let me ask you, why does a swim instructor not have 32? Because they could do them in that every hour. Does that make sense? They could have eight kids an hour for four hours. I'm just saying, I, I just, I think we've got to be careful only saying, "Hey, preschool, you, you're our, our poster child. The rest, if you teach piano, you do swim, you, you are," I just.
Yeah, fair point.
That's just my concern. Anyway, Sarah, what's your feeling on this?
I think we should go with the state requirements for daycares. Because they regulate it well, how many adults you need per child, per age. They do a really great job already regulating that. I don't think we need to do it again. And I think if we have not identified a problem that we're trying to solve, we should not be regulating this.
Now, the reason why this is brought up is because we've had issues, we've had residents complain. Is that why this has been? I mean, that's my understanding, is that we've had some residents that have been concerned about some daycares, either close together or traffic or things, and they've asked for some help here. Is that?
That's correct. And it's also the issue of our, the way our home occupation code is written currently, they're not allowed under home occupation licenses. And so we do need to address the code in order to allow them in general, but then the regulations would be up to the council's discretion.
I like the idea of requiring a traffic mitigation plan. I like the idea of notifying your neighbors. But beyond that, it just like even for piano lessons, my mother gave piano lessons for as long as I can remember. I mean, she's 80, she still has like 30 students, right? So.
But 30 a day?
No. But she's had an awful lot during the day. It's every 30 minutes, no complaints ever from neighbors.
But that's on, I mean, I guess.
So I, so I just think if we don't have to regulate it.
You're with no limits on the numbers. You're.
Yeah, I just think if we don't have to regulate it, you know, we don't want to, we want to make sure the traffic mitigation is taken care of because that's what's hard for neighbors, right?
Okay.
We want to make sure kids are safe.
So you're no regulate, so you're, the number on, for preschools is don't regulate the number. You're okay if there are notifications of the neighbors with the traffic. What about the quarter mile? Are you?
I like the quarter mile as well.
What about the background check?
I'm indifferent. I can't, it just doesn't make sense for it to make every stay-at-home mom or every person that wants to give a music lesson to have a background check. I mean, and I'm in a, in, you know, with me, I'm a nurse, you have to have a background check. That's great. So I'm not against background checks. I just don't think it's, makes sense in this instance. And the daycares already require it. The children are there. Leave it for that. I think other than that, just leave it alone.
Now, did we need to address if they could have an employee also in the?
For the preschool slash in-home instruction, yes.
So what about having an extra employee also? We were, in the code, I believe it has to be, the homeowner has to be present there for the preschool. And the question comes, can they have an extra employee?
I definitely think they should be able to have an extra employee.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Brittany, where are you at on all this?
I think they should have to, I think they should be able to have an extra employee. I like the idea of them having a dedicated parking spot off the street for that employee. I am not opposed to limiting it to 32 a day because it seems like you don't want, like where daycares are regulated by the state to a certain number, preschools aren't. So I think it is reasonable to put some upper level on, on that number. I like the idea of having to get like a traffic study or get a plan together.
You're okay with the quarter mile or not?
I mean, I'm a little more indifferent. I'm okay with the quarter mile, but I'm also okay with if all their neighbors are fine with it, then they're, then they're fine with it.
Okay, so background check?
I mean, it seems like a, not a cool thing to say to like, say you don't want to protect kids, but I, I've never even thought about having a background check for my kids' music teachers or whatever. So, and they're already required to have background checks for a daycare to fall within the state licensing. So it seems like requiring a background check for that is a duplication of making you go get another background check.
And it's interesting, we require kind of background or fingerprints for if they're going to work with our youth council. We require, there at the arts council, we're also requiring them, I'm just saying, the arts council has to go and get a background check to do classes. I recognize, but that's not, that's an organization, but they're doing a background check, right, Erin? Is that? I'm just letting you be aware where we require some of that.
Yeah, no, and I get it. I think the difference is that's, that's us requiring it as a municipality rather than requiring a business, right?
We also require it for all solicitor licenses. So if they're going to be out knocking our residents' doors, we require a background check.
We should for sure do that. For sure.
Okay. So Scott, have you, you, are you, are you okay with the 32 a day? And you want them to 16 per session or where are you at?
Well, on preschools, I think having 16 per session makes sense to me. And if you have two sessions, maybe some people have three sessions, I don't know, but two sessions, 16.
With a max of 32?
Max of 32. I think daycare should be, in my opinion, shouldn't be more than 16. I, I just think we need to be sensitive to the neighbors and traffic and I think it can get a little unwieldy. I really like the traffic study. I'm a little ambivalent on background checks for piano teachers. I think it makes sense for preschool and daycare, especially because you have younger kids and things, but I guess you could make that argument for piano teachers too. So I kind of lean towards the quarter mile spacing. Because you could have a preschool next door to each other and have a lot of traffic and while that sounds good, when people are in here complaining about it, it doesn't sound so good, you know? So I, I think having that quarter mile spacing would be a good idea.
Employee, an extra employee?
Oh, well, I think when you have that many children that you're trying to do, that obviously it's okay to have an extra employee. And you should have a place for them to park, if possible, on, on your property.
So the traffic study plus the extra parking, which the planning commission. Some, I'm just trying to help with what the planning commission. We've, we've had this in two other meetings and just trying to help us get together for a motion. Okay, Kim?
So I agree with Sarah. I, I think if it's not broken, don't fix it. When it comes to putting the number, max number of people, I just think of swim lessons and piano lessons and at some points they're over 32. And when you start putting more restrictions on for safety reasons, then sometimes less people apply for business licenses and just do it without a license, which then create more safety issues. I mean, but if we did do a max, I would do 32 as well, but I would prefer not to have a max and just go with what the state requires. I do have a question. I definitely want the traffic plan. I think that's a great idea, require a traffic plan. Allow an employee for in-home instruction, dedicated parking spot. For, for us, so when you say that they are required to go to their neighbors and let them know, are they, do they have to get a certain percentage saying, "Yes, we want them to," or they just have to let them know?
Years back, they did, where they had to actually get their neighbor's signatures. Right now, we just send out notices and then give them, I believe, two weeks, two weeks to respond. And if we don't get any complaints, we just move forward. If we do, we work it out with the applicant to try to resolve those complaints.
Kelly, to be clear, there's no regulation from the state about a preschool, only about a daycare, right? As far as numbers go?
Correct. Perfect.
Kim, where are you at on background checks?
I prefer not to have background checks. I think with this, what the state has set up so far, you know, I look to them for, for their background checks and then piano teachers, swim teacher, swim teachers. You know, we're parents, we do our own background checks. And then, you know, the, a quarter mile, I have some, some issues with that just because it, it does create limitations. So that is one that I can see either way, but, you know, I know this is a big issue that is facing, facing our state right now, that parents are desperate, they're looking for daycare, there's not a lot of issues. And so to put another restriction on it for, you know, 10 minutes of traffic, I, I think that I would just not have that in there, but if everyone else would like it in there, then I'm amenable to that.
And I'm having a little bit of a change of heart about the background check because, to your point, people are desperate for preschools. And I don't want to put them in a situation where they might be forced to choose something where it's not safe. So I think, so my change of heart is that I would be supportive of the background checks for the preschools, but not for like the music teachers.
You're right. I'm fine with preschools, daycares, in-home instruction. I, I don't think it needs to be required. Sorry about that.
And I agree with that, yeah.
Would I chuck a wrench in if I said it was in our neighborhood that I grew up, it was the piano teacher that was the little bit of a problem? I just, I just thought I have to kind of, you know, that that was the experience we had and I'm going, okay, as I look back, yeah, that was the piano teacher that later on, we found there were some issues that come up with some kids. I'm just, just trying to be safe. Okay, Tim?
Traffic plan, great idea. However, I noticed that we don't put limitations on elementary schools, for example, where there's really bad traffic problems. I, we live, we live, where we currently live, there are definite traffic issues at the elementary school across the street. And why would we require traffic plans and limitations on preschools and, and daycare when we don't on with elementary schools? There's no limitation on students at elementary schools. They've got them stacked up in, in portable rooms. I, I don't know. I think the demand is such and I think the benefit is such that I don't favor limitations on the number of students.
So numbers, no parking and traffic?
Parking plans are, I think it's, I think it's a good idea because there's safety first, but I, I think that we can come up with a solution.
Okay, quarter mile?
Quarter mile, I think, I think that's probably a good idea. But I, as I think Sarah and Kim expressed, we don't want to limit the number of locations by placing undue burdens on citizens that want to have these types of businesses because the need is there. And the alternative is just not to put them in preschool and, and they, they miss that on the benefit of a, of a preschool education. I, I think we need to maximize the possibility of having as many locations as possible as opposed to trying to minimize them.
Background check?
Background check, I'm in favor. I, when my kids were young, I went on the, what was it called?
Sexual.
Sexual offender website and I was shocked. I read some things on there, I go, seriously? It sounded like a plot for a movie. It was terrible. And, and so yes, I'm in favor of background checks. For, not necessarily for a piano teacher or swim, but, but definitely for, for preschool.
Okay, do we have a motion now? You kind of know where everyone's at. Do you have a motion?
Can, can I make one more comment, Mayor? I know we've kind of beat this a lot, but, and with all due respect, Tim, there's a difference between a public school that is built, that everybody knows is a public school, and there's a difference, I think, when you move into a neighborhood and it's a residential neighborhood, you build your home. And I think it's great to have the preschools and not opposed to preschools. The deans have done a great job with theirs, but it's kind of like, you don't know it's going to be there like the school most of the time. And so I, I think we still have to be sensitive to the people that live in residential areas. That's why I think that you need to have some limits and regulations and that because if not, we've had so many instances on the council where people are having trouble with home businesses. So, I mean, we could make the argument not to regulate anything, but then people are upset about it. You know, it's kind of like, we could say no speed limits, but it's a problem, yeah.
Those are very good, those are very good points, Scott.
That's, that's where I have it.
I just think in some cases, the, the benefits outweigh the disadvantages. But I also think, I mean, not to be disrespectful to those people that complain, but no matter what we do, we will have people that complain. We could find a cure for cancer and someone's going to complain and.
I don't know of many.
Okay. Perhaps that was a slight exaggeration.
With this, are we ready for a motion? Is there anyone here that's ready to make a motion? I, I tried to help you so you could kind of get that motion put together. Is anyone ready to formulate a motion?
I'll start out and then we can make amendments as you go if you want to do that. I'm going to let the city council approve the proposed amendment to amend several sections of the developmental, development code to add regulations for daycare, preschools and in-home instructions with the following change. Let's see, remove type one and type two for daycares. Allow employees for in-home instructions that do not live in the home. One, off-street parking stalls required for each employee that does not live in the home. Require a traffic plan. Are we saying daycare, preschools, in-home instructions, all of them? Okay. Do we already require the notification, so we don't need to do that? Okay. Let's see, require background checks. It's already required for daycare, so we want to require it for preschool.
Okay, so your motion does have background checks.
Yeah. That's it.
Did you say the motion does include background checks?
For preschool. It's already included with daycare.
On the motion that Kim is making, it includes a background check. Is there?
I will second.
But your motion does not include a limit on the number. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Not a limit, and it does not have the quarter mile in it, correct?
Yes.
So, okay, I have a motion by Kim, and I have, I believe, a second by Sarah.
Now, we have our attorney here. If I want to amend that, can I amend that, or do we need to vote on that?
Or you can make an alternate motion.
Well, I agree with everything in there, but as you know, I would recommend that we put a limit on daycares of sixteen and that on preschools, sixteen per session, which would be a total of thirty-two in a day's time. And I also support the quarter mile limit.
Okay, so that's, are you making an alternate motion?
I just want to, I agree a hundred percent with her motion. I just want to amend it to include some limits.
Are you amenable to that amendment that Scott just proposed?
Uh, no.
Okay, so you either have to make it as a.
Well, I make the same amendment, or I make the same motion she did, but I would put some limits.
Okay, so yours is now an alternate motion, which adds everything that Kim had, but you're adding in sixteen per session, thirty-two per day.
For preschools.
For preschool, and sixteen for daycare. Quarter mile, they can't be more than a quarter mile close to each other. That is now an alternate motion. Is there a second on Scott's alternate motion?
Is there a compromise with Scott's alternate motion and include the limits per day and per session?
Instead of doing it per session, do it per day?
Um, no, keep the, keep the limit on the number of students.
Well, that's what my motion was.
But then the other thing that you had different from Kim was the half a mile.
The quarter mile.
Quarter mile.
What you're asking is not to have the quarter mile?
Correct, but have the limit of sixteen per day.
Okay, I'll throw out the quarter mile if I.
So the alternate has no quarter mile in it. Scott, Scott's has everything Kim's does, except it is sixteen per session, thirty-two per day. Is there a second on Scott's motion?
I'll second Scott's motion.
Okay, I have, so I have Scott's motion with a second by Brittany. Now, my understanding is we have to vote on the alternate first. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, we are now voting on the alternate motion. The only difference in the alternate, or in the, not the alternate motion, is it has a limitation of sixteen per session, thirty-two per day. That's it?
That's the difference.
That's the difference between.
Or preschools and sixteen.
Oh, sixteen for daycare. I'm sorry. Thirty-two for, sixteen per session for preschool, thirty-two maximum, sixteen per daycare. My understanding of your motion.
Yeah, that's the only difference. I just would have some limits to save the neighborhood.
Councilmember Smith, for year thirty-two, for the preschool one, does that include all in-home instruction or specific to just preschool?
It's specific to preschool, but it could be all home instruction. I can't imagine people are going to have thirty-two, but I'll extend it to all home things, except daycare, I think should be a maximum of sixteen, maximum thirty-two for preschool per day.
And, and any in-home instruction?
Yes, thirty-two.
Now, Brittany, that was added. Are you still a second?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion now includes not just preschools, but all in-home. Stephanie, do you have a question on the alternate motion?
Yes, what was, you've got sixteen per session, thirty-two per day for preschools and home instructions. Daycares was a total of how many?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Per day.
Per day.
Per day, because it's usually one session.
Sixteen per session on daycare or preschool, thirty-two total on preschool, sixteen on daycare. Okay. Let's go ahead and, I wish we had electronic voting tonight. Okay, Sarah, we're gonna go ahead and start down with you. Sarah?
No.
Brittany?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Tim?
No.
Okay, that motion fails. We now go back to the original motion, which does not include any limitation on daycares, procession, or not daycares. I get, it does have a limitation on preschool, on daycares, daycares or preschools, correct?
Or in-home instruction.
Or in-home instruction. There's no limit. Am I understanding that correct, that was that motion?
Can I ask Kim to clarify one thing? For the background checks for preschools, are you wanting to require the fingerprint scanning or just a name check?
What do other cities require? Is that just name check?
They were, yes, they just require a name check, and then BCI always takes a fingerprint, but that we can request to just check the name.
I'm fine with name check.
Okay.
Okay, we're now going to vote on the original motion. Okay, I'm gonna start the opposite way. Tim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
I'm just gonna abstain, because I, I don't want to vote against preschools now. I just think we're gonna get bit so bad.
Okay, Brittany?
No.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, that passes three, one, and one abstain. Okay. That was item number seven. I know we have several people also here waiting on item. I'm gonna move, just to help us with some of the public here, to item number nine.
I'm gonna change my abstain to no.
Okay, did you just, that just now changed to be a three to two, with two noes, three yeses. Did we, did you get that, Stephanie? Okay, okay, I'm now gonna, we're gonna move our agenda to discuss item number nine, which is an action resolution of an inter-local cooperative agreement with Utopia. Andy, I have you down as that individual. Let's go discuss that.
I am not individual. Okay, so the city was approached by Utopia with a request for a, what amounts to what we typically call a franchise utility agreement. That's where a utility comes to the city and has the opportunity to put their facilities in the city's right-of-way to then serve the citizens. In the case of Utopia, they are an inter-local, or they are a governmental agency, and so that agreement has to be an inter-local agreement, rather than a franchise agreement. But essentially, what we're talking about is permission for them to put their facilities in the city's street rights away and, you know, in turn, serve the city's citizens. Now, the council has not seen this before this evening. Just laying out the basics of this agreement, I guess talked a little bit about point one, that this allows them to put their facilities in the right-of-way, and their plan is to commence in the Ridgeview development. When Ridgeview was installed, their baseline infrastructure, my understanding is Ridgeview approached Utopia and said, we'd like to have you as our internet provider.
Did Ridge, did Ridgeview approach Utopia?
That's what I've understood. There's a Utopia representative here today, but I did speak with him a lot about that earlier today, and he indicated that they were approached by Ridgeview, that Boyer.
You confirm with Ridgeview that what, that is the case?
I did not.
So we do not have confirmation of that?
I, I just took him at his word there, but he can speak for himself. But they, they have a relationship with Boyer, and they've served Boyer in other developments. And so Boyer approached them and said, we'd like to have you be the internet provider. And so as part of that, for them to, in order to go forward with Ridgeview, they've got to have that agreement to be able to put their facilities in the city's rights away. The agreement, however, does apply to the entire city. It's not just specific to Ridgeview. It would then let them put their facilities anywhere in the city and serve the citizens.
So once again, what you have here, this is not specific just to Ridgeview. Once we give this, this agreement, they can go anywhere in the city.
They would go anywhere in the city's public street rights away.
Can I ask a clarification? I know you're still going. But, so then that means they don't have any in the city currently?
Any agreement?
Any. How could they, how could they have any?
They don't have any. So Ridgeview just put in the conduits. They haven't, they haven't pulled the wires through the conduits.
So there is no, there is no wire fiber in Highland currently?
I'm gonna let him speak to that.
We can ask that. Why don't you finish your going through, and then we'll have.
Councilmember Bills, to my knowledge, no, but I don't know that I know every conduit in Ridgeview. But to my knowledge, no. But I'll let the Utopia representative speak to that. There is no cost to the city for them to install these services, nor is there a financial guarantee by the city for these. It's a little bit confusing in one way, because we have had Utopia here recently, where we have talked about the potential of them offering services to the entire city, in which case, if they're gonna run a service to every citizen in the city, they wanted us to be the guarantor. As a city, as you know, we're still evaluating various fiber options and making that decision. This is a different agreement from that, in that this just allows them to come and go in the right-of-way, but doesn't put us on the hook as far as any type of financial guarantee, nor does it put them on the hook to then serve all the citizens of the city. In this case, they just go where they want to go, if you will, for whatever reasons they determine appropriate. With that, I've got a suggested motion, but I think that you'd probably like to hear from the representative.
Do you have anything else to present? No, I'd like.
Can I ask Andy a quick question, though?
Yeah.
So, some sort of agreement between Boyer Company, who's developing Ridgeview, and Utopia. You said they put in the conduits, but those conduits could be used by other companies. Is that true?
I, I don't want to speak for Ridgeview and whatever commitments they've got, but yeah, I mean, a conduit's a conduit, right? And you could put different wires in those same conduits.
Well, I'm just, it just kind of seems to me, and we're gonna hear from the representative from Utopia, it just seems to me if we need an inter-local agreement with what is a quasi or a state entity, that this should have been done long before a developer in the city set up another agreement, because it's part of our city. And we've talked about Utopia for years, and there's a lot of questions in my mind, so let's, I'd like to hear what he has to say.
It's okay. I think we have a representative here from Utopia. We'd like to invite him to come up at this time. And maybe you could help answer a lot of these questions.
I'm Aaron Leach, so. Your question, just so I understand it, you, you're questioning on the, why the developer?
Well, I'm just, if we have to have an inter-local agreement before we proceed with Utopia, because you're a state entity or quasi-state or whatever, it just seems like the inter-local agreement should have happened before there was any movement with the developer.
How did we get to where we're at?
Yeah, how did we get to where we are, because it's kind of like the cart before the horse.
Richard Moffett and Spencer Moffett are representatives from, from Boyer Group. They approached us back in May of 2021. So, from my understanding, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, the developer can go develop the property before it's handed off to the city. Is that correct? As far as the right-of-way and everything else like that?
No, it's all.
Andy, what's?
Yeah, I mean, as far as part of the process, the developer can build their improvements before recording their plaque, because the dedication of the lands don't occur until they record their plaque. So if that's your point, then the answer to that is yes. They, in order to build the development, they have to come to the city, get approvals, et cetera. But they can build their improvements and then record their plaque.
So what, so what happens from an order of operations is that the developer approached us, they opened the trench up, and we place our conduit in, in the open trench. So it's, it's not conduit that's owned by the developer, it's conduit that we have placed at our expense.
Is that only you to be used by Utopia?
That is only, other, other utility providers are allowed to go put that in as well.
They could go put their own conduit. The conduit that's in, that Utopia put in, only could have a Utopia fiber line to go in it, correct?
That is correct. So at the time, you know, it's still under the developer control, and now it's in the process of where now the developer is recording those things, which in turn necessitates us to make sure that we're in compliance with city code to get a franchise agreement.
You already, so some of those have already been recorded? There's actually been individuals moved in? Is there already fiber lines in those conduit?
No.
So there's no fiber currently in any of those conduit lines over in Ridgeview?
Not, to my understanding. So we, we are in the process of getting those things situated, but.
So I, I guess I'm, where you need an inter-local agreement with the city, and, and they approached you. I'm surprised you didn't come to the city, first of all, and get the inter-local agreement before you spent a lot of money, because I think there's an assumption on your part that we're just gonna say, this is wonderful, when it kind of opens the door to Utopia and the whole city. And we've talked about Utopia in the past, and I've always been concerned about the financial obligations that is going to come on the city because of that. And we're trying to get our city out of debt, so I'm, I'm pretty disturbed about this. It seems like you know you needed an inter-local agreement. I'm surprised you didn't come earlier when Boyer approached you and said, hey, they're gonna do this development, they want us, can we get an inter-local agreement? Now it's after the fact, where you spent a lot of money, and that kind of bugs me a little bit.
So, just so we're on the same page, I mean, this is not a city partnership. You know, we, we want to be treated like any other utility provider that the city works with, Comcast or CenturyLink or anything like that. So, you know, there's three flavors of Utopia. We have a full-blown city partnership, which we are under, you know, working with the city.
We've had you come and do a presentation, and that presentation's still open, and we're still trying to discuss.
Yeah, so that's one flavor of Utopia, is a full-blown city partnership, which does require a financial partnership. The other flavor of Utopia is to work with the city and just hooking up city infrastructure. We've done that in other cities as well. And then the last is just allow us a franchise agreement, and then we can service customers within the city, which is how we want to be treated right now in this particular situation.
Explain to me, is Utopia public or private?
It's, it's kind of a hybrid, when you think about it, because we, we, our government, from the standpoint of that we are, are managing the infrastructure, but we have private companies that, that we, we don't, are not the retail provider.
Right, you lay the fiber optics and things.
They own the fiber.
Yeah, and you own the fiber. The city doesn't own the fiber.
That is true.
That's correct. Okay, so it's a little different than Comcast. I mean, they don't have to, they have to have an agreement with the city, but it's not an inter-local agreement, because it's not a state entity, correct?
Agreed. I mean, that's typically what we've been doing, is just inter-local agreements with, when it's a government to government. I understand from a private perspective, it's going to be a franchise agreement.
So let me ask you, what other cities, like when you said you went in, for, for me, one of the concerns, okay, Highland only has certain areas that are really dense. Right now, if Ridgeview goes and put in fiber into one of the more dense areas of Highland, that takes away, if we, if we don't choose Utopia, it takes away one of our golden carrots, if you want to say, one of our areas to serve. So what other cities have you done this, where you've done, where you've went into a city and put in without having them with the, you know, like a franchise agreement? Is there, what would be, you know, what's, what's happened in that in the past?
We don't do that. We, we have.
But you're doing that here. That's what I'm trying, what you're doing here, I guess, right now, you're going into Ridgeview. It's not a city agreement, it is a franchise agreement or an inter-local agreement, right?
We do inter-local agreements with pretty much all the cities that we have.
But they do a financial commitment with you?
No, no. We only have eleven member cities that have the, that particular situation, or where we've partnered with cities that, that want to have that partnership.
So you have other cities that you've not had them make the commitment?
No.
But do you cover the entire city with that, or do you just do sections?
We basically do it, it's based where on the service providers. So the private companies come to us and say, hey, we want service at these locations, and we go build those, those connections. They can be businesses, they can be greenfields, they can be HOAs, MDUs. That's, you know, we're, we're basically being asked by our service writers, private companies, to go and, and build these things. So Boyer Group approached us because they wanted Utopia at that location.
And, but Ridgeview doesn't have to have any financial commitment, correct?
No, we're, we're footing the bill.
So why would Highland, why would Highland not want to do that, you know, do the model where, hey, we want you to come and, and come into Highland and do it, but we don't want the financial commitment? I'm just, you understand what I'm saying?
Sure.
Could we do it that way with Utopia?
You're asking us to go and build out your city without any financial commitment?
That's what you're doing at Ridgeview. I'm just.
Well, I mean, yeah, but typically, you know, most, you know, companies would, would do things based on ROI and things like that, right? So I, you know, we're gonna, wherever the, the service providers want us to go, and then there's, there's ROI for us to do that.
That what you're saying, you're gonna go to the more profitable areas. That's what our, I mean, I think it's the council. Okay, so now let me, let's just kind of help vet some things. So it sounds like Ridgeview, Spencer Moffett got ahold of you in June of 2021, I think you're saying?
Twenty twenty-one, yeah.
And as it comes in, as you get going, you start to lay the conduit inside the city, they've now recorded, Ridgeview starts to record these plats, and so now your conduit sits in the right-of-way that's owned by Highland, and that's where we're at today, correct? And just so the council's aware, I do believe a prior city official had talked to Utopia and said, hey, you know, you know, I think they probably, when, when they were talking about Ridgeview, there was probably a city official, elected official, that was aware that Utopia was going into that Ridgeview area, just to be, you know, my understanding is.
Was he authorized to represent the council?
He didn't have the authority to do such.
Is there a way we could double-check that question about whether or not you have laid any fiber at all in Ridgeview? Because, because, I mean, we wouldn't be, like, you can't have done that already, am I correct, without a franchise agreement? I would like to be certain that that hasn't happened.
I, I don't, I mean, we have fiber within the city through, on, on UDOT right-of-way, so that's how we're getting to the Ridgeview area.
Did we just, what, did we just say that if, if we approve this franchise agreement, then you can lay fiber anywhere in the city? Is that what I heard? So, is the fact that you have fiber already in that UDOT right-of-way, does that?
It doesn't require a franchise agreement, because it's part of the UDOT, yeah.
State roads, yeah.
So what you're, because UDOT down like. So what you're, because UDOT down like Alpine Highway, SR 92, 540, they have fiber lines all down through, that's how they're doing their cameras? Are you providing, are you saying that you're providing UDOT that fiber and you're running their cameras?
Um, no, that's UDOT fiber, but we have our own, own fiber. We, we facilitate hooking up to educational facilities where we can. In, in Highland, we'll probably hook up to, you know, if we win awards from U, UETN, we'll hook up to the schools there, so. And just so we're on the same page, I know it was represented to you, you know, when my boss, Roger Timmerman, came in and expressed to you that, you know, Ridgeview, we're not cherry-picking in the city. We were approached by the, by, you know, a private company to, to go build that area. We have stated to you that we would make Ridgeview part of the Utopia agreement, so if it's a situation where Utopia does want to partner with Utopia, that all the build that takes place within that community would be part of the agreement.
What you're stating is, let's assume that the, the calculation, if we decide to go with Utopia, they're saying you need to have, your connection needs to be 2,000 homes would be your commitment, you would count the Ridgeview connections towards that commitment?
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, if we end up not going to Utopia, and we allow this, that whole Ridgeview development will be with Utopia, and it will basically count against us if we go with a different business entity?
Or, or they would have to go like, let's assume, and we're just going, Google, Google fiber, Google could still go into Ridgeview, but they have to go road cut and do all the other stuff, is that correct, Andy? I mean, they, we're not giving exclusivity there, it's just they, the other fiber provider would have to go compete against Utopia, which they might not want to, it would be up to that whoever we decide. Now however, if the city did a project, then it would be harder for us to garner the, the take rate from, if it was a city project, with someone else.
Well, and I just want to understand, I mean, we want to be treated like any other telco, and we don't have exclusivity in Ridgeview. So we are going to be a subscription base there, we don't have 100% take rate there, we are just the same as CenturyLink, I'm sure CenturyLink could probably put their conduit in as well, so...
Andy, do we know if other providers put in conduit for fiber? I'd heard that there might be a second provider over there.
I don't know for sure, did Spencer say they, they have conduits for CenturyLink as well?
Yeah.
We know, I, we know that a portion of the development has CenturyLink, the, the Lennar phase for sure has, has made an agreement with CenturyLink, but I don't know through the rest of it, is it throughout, the conduits for CenturyLink throughout?
Sorry, Spencer told me that Pod A had the options for both CenturyLink and possibly Utopia.
So let me see if I can clarify things. So Utopia, quasi-government entity, needs interlocal agreements, the other companies need franchise agreements, am I correct? Okay, so let me just see if I can clarify this in my mind, because we need this interlocal agreement with the city council, we've talked about Utopia for years, there's always been some apprehension about long-term costs to the city. Because we're trying really hard to get our city out of debt, we'll probably be one of the few communities in the nation that is out of debt. Though there's a lot, I've had people call me and concerned about what we're obligating ourselves to. So, I mean, we have another possible development in the middle of the city, the Patterson Development, it's not presented or anything, but they're just off of a state highway. So if Patterson's came to you and said, hey, we want Utopia, you could just go ahead and provide that without talking to the council. Or if we pass this interlocal agreement, you could just go ahead and do that. So basically, my biggest concern is, is it just seems like when Boyers, and I've been involved in this project, because I'm on the, on a lot of levels here, and I've been supported of different things, but it just kind of bugs me that you know that you needed an interlocal agreement, it seems like before you spent all that money, you should have came to us first and said, hey, is it okay with the council? Because whoever told you from the level didn't have approval of the council. That's what I have problems with, it seems like, you know, you're, it's kind of circumventing the way we do things, does that make sense?
Um, I understand you're...
I mean, you do this in other cities, I understood you tried to do this in American Fork, and they weren't too happy about it.
Yeah, American Fork is a different situation, um, that, there's other issues that, with American Fork, so. I, I, I don't feel like we're circumventing anything. Again, I, you know, based on my understanding, you know, the, the developer asked us to put the conduit in, this, you know, the conduit's placed before the city, you know, the easements and things like that are recorded. Now that they are recorded, I mean, this process of getting the franchise agreement is taking a little bit of time, so, I mean, we're trying to follow the, the city's process and making sure that we are legit. As far as like, you know, approaching the council and, and making sure I did, we want to be treated like Comcast or CenturyLink, so if, if they're required to come in and present to you their plans and those kinds of things, we will do the same things, so...
But you're a government agency that needs an interlocal agreement, it's a different deal than a franchise agreement. Are we passing, I thought we were passing an interlocal agreement tonight?
It is an interlocal.
Right.
It's an interlocal agreement, the common term i- in this case, I think what, when Aaron keeps mentioning franchise agreements, it is an interlocal agreement because they are governmental agency, but the, the common use term is franchise agreement, so it kind of gets, while this is an interlocal agreement, it, for this discussion purpose, you know, it's kind of using franchise agreement interchangeably with that, you know, if, if you're going to say that a franchise agreement is an agreement that allows, you know, a utility provider to go in the city's right-of-way, you know, that, that there's other, you know, franchise taxes and payments.
So would this be a correct statement? So right now, because CenturyLink already had an agreement with Highland, they didn't necessarily need to come and get, they already have a franchise agreement, they were able to put conduit. If Comcast wanted to come and put fiber, and if you want to say cherry-pick Highlands areas where fiber would make sense from, they could go do that same as, as CenturyLink?
They have a franchise agreement.
Because they have an agreement already with the city. And it was ahead of time.
Right.
What Utopia's saying, will you please look at us or treat us the same as Comcast or CenturyLink? I understand they're quasi-governmental, and that's what the council's going to have to look and say, is there a reason to do something different here with Utopia versus what we've done with Comcast or CenturyLink or others? That's, to me, I think that's kind of the decision that has been made. If it's okay, I also promise to have some public input on this, because I know there might be some residents, is there other questions that we, we have here?
Can I ask Rob a question? Hey, Rob.
Hello.
What's up?
How much?
Does that distinction matter to us, the, the fact that it's a quasi-governmental, or if it is or isn't? Does that something that we need to think about or consider?
I don't see...
That's a question you thought I was going to ask?
Not, not the question I thought you were going to ask, it, it doesn't seem to have that much legal significance, it's kind of just a different term we use for when we have a contract between two public bodies rather than a public body and a private entity. So in that regard, there's not too much difference between a normal franchise agreement and this interlocal agreement.
But do government entities go in and build something and then say, oh, gee, maybe we need to have an interlocal agreement? I always thought you did it beforehand, and if they're government entities, I thought government entities would know to do that. That's my, my concern, I think the cart's before the horse.
And that's, I think, a valid concern, that's a little bit, I think, separate from the fact that this was an interlocal agreement versus franchise, that's just more concerned about how this process was carried out, which I think is, is valid and totally appropriate.
Can I make one more comment to Councilmember Smith? There, just on, there is no financial commitment here to the city. So your track record of trying to, to, to get out of debt should stay true, because we're not, I mean, it's our investment that we're putting into the, into the city to serve, serve the residents here, so, just as an FYI.
Okay, I know there'd been a couple of residents that maybe wanted to come up and, you know, they, they saw Utopia on the agenda, so at this time I'd like to open it up, if there'd like to be any residents like to come comment on this interlocal agreement between Highland City and Utopia, is there anyone that'd like to come up and address the council?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is David Bunker, I've, my wife and I have lived in Highland for about 25 years, and we love it, it's a great city, thank you for all the work you do on, on council and, and being so involved, and you guys deliberate very well during your council meetings, so it's, it's wonderful.
We like each other.
It bugs some people that we deliberate so much.
So that's good. I had a couple notes that I wanted to, to comment on. I appreciate the staff report that identifies that Utopia is a governmental entity, they're not quasi-governmental, they're full governmental. That is why they need a, an interlocal versus a franchise. Utopia does not pay franchise fees, they're not subject to the franchise law. And, and maybe Mr. Patterson can, can look that up, let me just look real quick, I can give you the code reference on that, if you need that. Let me just give that to you real quick. So that's in Title 10 of the Utah Municipal Code, Chapter 1, Part 4. In the staff report, it identifies that if Utopia is allowed this, this agreement, this interlocal agreement, which really is a right-of-way use agreement, it's the right to get in your right-of-way, then they can go anywhere in the city that they would like, and that is true. And they do that in other cities without having an agreement with cities, with the other cities, at times. And so that's an important, important thing to think about. There was a statement that there's no other cost to the city. Well, sometimes there's unintended consequences for a decision. That can include entering an interlocal agreement like this one, and was aptly pointed out by the mayor, if they, if you engage in this agreement, and Utopia can go anywhere in the city, and yet the city wants to do some other option, and maybe do something else, then it may hinder future decisions of this council. And I think that would be important. In the terms of the agreement, if you read the term, it says that it can be terminated for cause. I would be very careful with that language, read the agreement very carefully. That, that can limit the city with what they want to do, because the agreement will automatically renew after the initial 15-year term, up to 50 years. So you're, you're entering a, a pretty long agreement here. And so I would just recommend that the, that the council really consider this carefully, because it, it has ramifications. And I know you're all smart, and you guys have dug into these things, and I have trust that you'll make the right decision, whatever that decision is, so thank you for your time. I just need to say one other thing real quick, on a different note. So my, my home was broken into last week, and someone kicked in the man door next to my garage door, and so I, I called the, the dispatch, the non-emergency dispatch, and the police department, Highland Police Department, came immediately. And I just want to tell you what a great chief you have. He is a fantastic chief and a great police department, so thank you for, for, for the service that they give, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come up and address anything with the Utopia agreement? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council unless you have other questions, if you have questions of Aaron Leach or other things. Counsel, a vote, a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, I, I'm uncomfortable voting on this, I, I want, these are my neighbors, I want them to have internet options, I think Utopia is certainly an option, but there's been a lot of discussion over the years about Utopia, I'd like to know all the details, the ramifications, the expenses to the city, I, I'm just a little uncomfortable getting into an agreement with them right now until I understand kind of the long-term commitment and plan and any financial obligations. Now, my opinion is that I'd like to continue this, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this interlocal cooperation agreement with Utopia until we can do a little more research and see, because I think once you enter in this agreement and then go anywhere in the city, I think in the end, with the many discussions we've had in Utopia, that there will be some costs that the city has to shoulder, there will be some issues about long-term commitment, and, and I'd just like to understand that better, because in all the presentations we've had, we've always said we'd like more information about the costs. Now, I know that bonding's changed over time, there's self-bonding and all that thing, but I'd like to know how it affects us and, and long-term, and so I think I'd like to move...
Your motion to continue this item?
Continue this to the first part of the year.
We call this the gold personality, just if you're wondering, those who've been...
I agree with Scott, I'm not ready to approve or deny, I, I don't feel comfortable with it.
So Scott made a motion, are you seconding in the motion?
Yeah, I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Sarah.
Nope, let's move it, let's move it along.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion before a vote? Okay, I'll start with Scott.
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tim?
What about?
Continue it.
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Okay, so that was a four to one vote for continuing. Okay, I will go ahead, and we will now move on to item number four, which is a public hearing and resolution for garbage rate updates. We, I believe, who, who's going to be doing that one, is that you, Aaron?
That is me, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to give Kelly a minute to get back to my slides, so this is before you, so normally we only update garbage rates once per year, but this has come before you because of a change that North Point has done to their rates. North Point, in case you're not aware, is a, is the transfer station, so all of our garbage gets picked up by Waste Management, taken to North Point, and then eventually North Point contracts with another entity to take it out to a landfill. And so, if you'll go forward for me, Kelly. So like I said, normally we do this once a year around budget time, so in June of this year, we did set garbage rates for the new fiscal year. Per direction from the council, we set them at a, a break-even scenario, meaning we're not making any money for garbage services, right? It's not supplementing the general fund, it's just covering the cost of those services, which are largely from our hauler, Waste Management, and then North Point for the tipping fees, and then there are some costs associated with our staff who does, who deals with garbage services there. So because of the way that we've done that analysis and set up that, set up the fee, that means that any unexpected increases either mean the general fund has to subsidize garbage, or we need to increase the rates in order to continue to break even. So like I said, North Point, just last month, voted to increase the rate that we pay to, to them for our tonnage to $34 per ton. Based on how many tons we contribute to North Point from Highland City, we estimate, and I verified these numbers, that it'll be about a $21,000 increase per year. I, in my opinion, the most fair way to do that is just to break it over the number of garbage cans we have per city, so for every tonnage increase, right, split that over the number of garbage cans, and so when you do that math, for this, over 7,000 garbage cans we have in the city, that includes first and second garbage cans, it's 23 cents per month that that would mean to increase, to go up. And again, we would look at this again in about six months, when we're doing budget, because at that point we'll have more information, especially from Waste Management, our hauler. So if you look at, what does that mean? So this table is included in your staff report, and it's available for you to look at here, so it would be 23 cents per month per garbage can you had, so whether you had one, two, or more, there's no increase for recycling, because recycling doesn't go to North Point, so it didn't make sense to charge them for an increase to North Point. If you had two garbage cans at your home, it would mean 46 cents a month increase, or over the six months that we're looking at, $2.76 or $5.52 over the course of a year. And so that, that's the fee that we are proposing, and we'd propose that it would go into effect in January, that's when the new rates will go into effect for us for North Point. And happy to answer any questions you have, Mayor and Council.
I actually, we, didn't we do a garbage increase just here this last July?
We did, so we increased, because there were, not republic, Waste Management passed on an extraordinary increase to us, and between that and the projected increases we saw for our growth, we did do an increase for all three cans. But again, we did it, you know, to the best of staff's ability and calculation, we did it at a break-even scenario, so meaning we're not making any money off of garbage.
So I'm on this, on this committee, and there was a lot of discussion, the North Point Transfer Station has tried really hard to keep costs down. The North Point transfer station has tried really hard to keep costs down. This cost increase comes from the fact that because of fuel costs, it costs, so your garbage is all taken to the transfer station, but then it's kind of sorted out and different things, and it's taken to the landfill on the southwest corner of the lake called Bayview. And the cost increase there is from a company called MBI that transports that, and it's a fuel cost. And I mean, it's just because fuel's gone up and different things. Now, in our meeting, they said, well, gee, if costs come down, we'll lower it, but I don't ever see that happen. But we had a long discussion because I thought we needed to clarify the presentation. There's been a lot of emails, discussions with Aaron and Neil, who is the supervisor down there, because at one time, when I calculated the figures he gave me, it was more like a $24,000 increase. But I think Aaron feels comfortable, I think he's finally settled, it's $21,000 spread over all of our garbage cans. I think I understand it better. But, you know, it's an unfortunate increase, it's fuel charges. And I actually, I know this would be a surprise, but I voted against it. So, anyhow, yeah.
This is a public hearing, so if it's okay at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open this up to the public to come, and they could address the new garbage rates increase or anything dealing with the garbage rates. Does anyone like to come up and address the council on this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion and a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Tim, you looked like you wanted to say something, I'm sorry.
I think we need to, if the stipulation in the contract is that they can raise, they're not raising rates, it's a fuel surcharge fee.
Well, it's a fuel fee.
It's a fuel fee, over what was anticipated, over calculated costs. Okay, so that's in the contract, so they can do this anytime.
Well...
Do they have to prove that?
So, there's contract with the transfer station, and then there's a contract with Waste Management. They're two different things.
Right.
So, the increase earlier in this year was with Waste Management, is that not correct?
Correct.
And they reflected some things there. This is with the transfer station.
I mean, I don't mean to sound harsh, but why do we have contracts if they can unilaterally raise rates? Unless in the contract, it states specifically that unforeseen circumstances such as increases in fuel cost, then they can unilaterally increase the rate.
I think this is a little different. We actually have a seat on this board, so I think the board members look at the budget of the transfer, to put you know, station scene.
Right.
So, I think the board is the one that then voted, and we're a member of that board. And so, the board voted to pass the cost on to all the seats.
It's a special service district, there's representation in all the cities.
We don't really, we don't really have a choice, and that's fine, but can we also put in some sort of stipulation that if the gas goes down and fuel goes down, they need to...
Reassess it.
Reassess it.
Not on the board, it would be Scott, the board that'd be voting, so if the costs go down, they could vote to bring it down. It's a board.
And we can put that in the motion, I'd be happy to see that in the motion.
Let's put that in the motion, but also, we don't really have a choice here, and whether it comes in the form of fees in the city bill, or if it comes from the general fund, it's still, it's the same, so...
Right, it's still an increase.
I suspect you're going to move to approve this.
Well, do you want to make the motion?
Do you want to make the motion and put that stipulation in? I'm happy to take that back.
I, is that okay?
Sure.
I move that the Highland City Council approve the resolution fee schedule amendments for garbage can fees with the stipulation that it will reevaluate fuel costs and other ancillary costs based upon economic factors.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Tim, second by Scott. We're going to go to vote. Brittany?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
That passes five to zero.
I thought it was a Tim or Kim, I couldn't...
I'm sorry, I got almost, kind of moved you guys through that. Okay, our next one is a public hearing on an ordinance of protection of public property. That is Rob Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a response to a request from the council from a while ago. As we were talking about encroachments and various things, and certain reports of vandalism, or, you know, people driving in public parks and damaging landscaping, that stuff, we realized that we didn't have a specific code that was kind of really tailored to deterring and penalizing that kind of activity. We have certain code sections that deal with, actually, we have certain code sections that deal with public parks and trails, but aren't really all that specific, kind of around, you know, you can't dump your lawn trimmings or clippings in it, or placing private property on it. So, the council previously asked us to prepare a better ordinance that was more tailored to damaged public property, so we have done that. So, as a summary, we already had a code section that related to the state criminal code related to trespass. We've now added a new section, kind of tweaked a few things to the trespass code, just to make sure it's clear, this is all private and public property, and then we have a new public property section. So, we prohibit damage to public property, and you'll see there's a very lengthy list of all the different ways I could think of to describe how someone could hurt public property in any way. And then, I proposed, and the council can obviously tweak this, I proposed kind of a tiered structure for the punishment if we're going for either civil or criminal remedies, where if damages $500 or less, it's a Class C misdemeanor, if it's over 500, it's a Class B, which is the highest the city can impose. The city's code already had kind of a tiered level for trespass, where it was like the first violation was a couple hundred, then it kept getting larger, so I thought I would mirror that, but the council could just impose Class C or Class B or anything else. So, this is, this is in the staff report, but this is the ordinance, this is the new language describing here's what public property is. It's anything that we own or any other public entity may own, includes all our rights-of-way, open space, any easement, lease, or other property we may have, and then really just B is a long list of literally every synonym I could think of for how someone could damage public property in various ways. It's broad enough that it would include, I think specifically for the council to be aware of, encroachment. If someone builds something on public property, if someone puts a line or a pipe or something through public property, if they cut down a public tree, or ride in a four-wheeler and, you know, leave tire marks, it would all be covered in this new section. And so, here's more ways we can damage public property that are all going to be very specifically illegal. It's a lot. And then, here's the penalty section, where we say we can go by criminal or civil if we have an administrative process. Then, that's the penalty being a 500 or less is, over 500, 500 or more is Class B, and 500 or less is Class C. And then, there's some other language I didn't show you, but it's in the ordinance, it just says, and we calculate it based on costs to remediate or repair or replace, depending on what's appropriate. And then, we have some exceptions already for trespass. We just clarified that you can drive in the normal course of business operations, so long as those business operations involve you driving on places that you should be driving and not on our park for whatever reason. Or if you have a permission from the city to be on the properties. That might be a permit, it might be a franchise agreement, it might be a maintenance agreement, something in writing that the city says, go do the thing you want to do on the property. So, that's the proposed motion, happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any kind of financial liability to the person or persons that commit these crimes? And if they're minors, would that pass on to their parents?
Your kids doing...
There are restitution provisions in the criminal code. This isn't directly related to that. It's, restitution's hard to manage. You can always go after that, we can always, aside from this, this gives us a criminal penalty, we can always go after someone civilly and say, you have, you know, you caused $20,000 city property, we can just always sue them for that.
Right, why don't we just send the bill to the parents or to the individual and say, pay this, or...
Which...
We're going to put a lien on your property, or whatever.
Well, we can't quite do the lien part.
Why not? Sell it.
But, yes, so this gives us, I don't foresee a lot of citations coming out of this, I see this more as, it's possible, it will be an enforceable code, but it's more of a, you know, when we send out code compliance letters, sometimes we have to get to the point of saying, and if you ignore this letter, like you've ignored our previous letters, we will, we can pursue these other enforcement mechanisms, which may include a Class B misdemeanor. So, we always have the option to go after for restitution, just...
I just think if there's a slap on the hand to a minor, and the parents say, don't do that again, if the parents get a bill for $12,850, then it's going to be more than a slap on the hand, it's going to be, if you do this again, then I just think the one has to accompany the other, but...
You don't really hold parents responsible for the children in that way, most of the time in these types of situations, unfortunately, sometimes.
Okay, Rob, can I make a comment? I appreciate all the work that's gone into this because we have way too much vandalism in our city, and I think it's good to have in code ways that we can kind of publicize and help encourage people saying, there is a penalty when you do this, and teach our children. There was one little phrase in there, though, that I had a little trouble with, the one about picking flowers. So, I thought, you know, if a little lady happened to be over in the Larson Park where there's a beautiful rose garden, she picks a rose, and our police officer who is enforcing the traffic on 6,000 West or 9,600 sees her, is he obligated to arrest her?
Yes, 100%. That's the way Chief Willing prefers it.
I probably wouldn't, I'd throw out the picking flowers.
It's more written, I have actually heard of cases where someone will dig out entire flower, like beds that are planted by the cities.
And that's different than picking it.
Let's just say, dig the flowers or seeds instead of pick.
Dig flowers, we can replace, remove, remove.
Remove the flower plant, yeah.
So, here's a question I have. Who determines when we enforce?
It's two levels, there's, the officer always has discretion in terms of issuing a citation, and then the prosecutor has a second level of prosecutorial discretion in prosecuting a case, or reaching a plea bargain or some other agreement to resolve a matter. Sometimes it's, we will have matters, and we will forward a case on to the prosecutor and say, we hate, you know, this is our evidence, we've collected it, we've done that, I think, a couple of times, and sometimes the prosecutor says, hey, that's great, that's enough evidence, I'll go and, you know, file information, get a case started. Sometimes he responds and says, this doesn't, this isn't enough for what we have, this is what I would need to see in order to really kind of prosecute.
So, it's not really the city staff that's sending letters that we're sending these fines, it has to go to prosecutor, it goes to the legal process to go do that, correct?
Correct. What would happen is mostly, like I said before, it's kind of the general threat of, hey, if you don't listen to us, here's the potential penalty, as kind of an encouragement of, don't make us go through that process, please.
If it's okay, council, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to go ahead, and at this time, we'd like to open item number five, public hearing and ordinance for protection of public property up for public comment. Is there anyone here that'd like to come up and address the council with a public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and we'll bring it back to council for either discussion or motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the city council approve and adopt the ordinance related to protecting public property and providing penalties for the violation thereof, but I would like to change picking flowers to removal of flower...
Plant.
Plant.
I'll second that.
Perfect.
Okay. I have a motion by Kim, second by Scott. Are you correct on that motion there, Stephanie? Okay, we will then go ahead and we'll start with Scott.
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
We're going to go to Kim?
Yes.
And Tim.
Is the providing penalty... Is still undefined.
What do you mean?
Well, it says providing penalties, does that...
Well, the penalties are defined in there. That's the misdemeanor penalties.
Okay, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to zero. We'll now move on to item number six, which is an action item, it's amendment of the encroachment policy, and that is also our city attorney, Rob Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I don't need to go into much history, you are well aware of the many discussions we have had on this. The most recent updates, so last time we talked about the encroachment policy, we were amending it to not require us to mail out the entire policy with it. With that, we had some discussions regarding maintenance agreements, and we've also been working with the Highland Hollows residents. A few of them have responded to the notices we've sent out, and we've, as staff, have realized, some language doesn't quite work for what we want to do with it. So, we have some proposed amendments that, for you all to consider. Yeah, I forgot what I wrote in my slideshow. There are three major changes, and I don't know that they're that major, but the first is, we are asking for the council to give staff a little more discretion on how to handle fixing encroachments. As we originally drafted it, and this was how I originally drafted it, so the fault is on me, it was written that the fixing of an encroachment required them to remove the encroachment, very kind of black and white. As we started working with Highland Hollows, we've realized there are certain improvements that have actually improved the kind of area, there's a dry creek in there, it's kind of armored it, or that had become so embedded in the ground or trees that removing them would damage public property. So, instead of just saying remove, we would propose changing it to just allow staff to require them to alter it, so it doesn't look like a private area anymore, but still doesn't damage the public property. So, basically, we're trying to get to the public benefit, but not always by just strictly removing it. So, this is the proposed change on the next slide. So, residents are required to remediate the encroached-upon property to ensure that the encroachment no longer interferes with the intended public use of the property. This required remediation may include removing or altering encroachments, restoring grades, natural landscapes and vegetation, and taking other actions approved by city staff, striking out that other provision, and then, whereas otherwise authorized by the city council. So, that was change one that we proposed. Second one was also in dealing with what happened when a resident goes to make the changes to the property. They're going onto city property, and they're going to be doing work on city property, and this will excite Tim, I think.
I deserve that.
But the question arose, what happened if a resident says, okay, I'm going to go tear out, you know, my bricks or whatever I place down there, trips and falls down a slope and hurts themselves on city property, doing something pursuant to a city-approved plan for remediation? So, we say, great, so now, part of the plan is that you have to agree to indemnify and release the city from liability for you doing the work that we approve, and that goes for your contractors as well.
Okay, okay. Tim, does that meet your requirement of the concern of the liability of the city?
I'll be honest here, you'll probably be a little surprised. I think your proposed change is really well-written and really good, and I really like it. And this part really kind of seals the deal for me.
Okay, good.
Rob, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
What if the resident refuses to sign that?
So, for us, that would mean they're just not agreeing to a remediation plan, and we'll just follow the enforcement process in the policy. We're basically saying, your improvement plan that you have to submit, get approved from staff, we're going to have like a little application form, and it's going to say, by submitting this, I agree, and then have the legal language in there, that basically, your plan is to do this, and it's not our responsibility. So, that way, for a lot of people who hire contractors to come in and dig out things, it's not a big concern because contractors will have insurance and be covered themselves. The concern is, what if a resident themselves is going out to work on city property, they shouldn't have done it in the first place, and the alternative is, we can do it, but it'll be at their expense. So, we want to say, you can have us do it, this is more expensive, but if you do it, you can't sue us for how you carry out your own work.
So, one more quick question. The stipulation that it could be remediated for the benefit of the city, who makes that determination? Because that seems rather subjective.
Staff.
Staff.
And we always have the provision that if staff ever is uncertain, or there's kind of a dispute between staff and the resident about, you know, what's really necessary, it always comes back to the council.
Okay, that sounds good, thanks.
So, can I just, so I appreciate, again, the work that's been done on this, I think it kind of helps clarify some things, but as I understand, this gives the staff flexibility to work, because some of these improvements that have been done on city property would make sense to leave in place.
Exactly.
Rather than trying to go back and tear it all up and make it natural, when there's a bridge over the creek, or there's a retain wall, that makes good sense. So, this allows the city staff to work with them and say, you know, this makes sense, doesn't, we're not trying to be punitive here, we're trying to just work with you on, is that basically what we're trying to do?
That's exactly what we're trying to get at. And you could speak to this better, or Kelly, but in Highland Hollow, there's the Dry Creek area, and a couple of residents, kind of, they actually got, I believe, a stream alteration permit, but they like lined the stream bed with rocks and other things, which make it looks a lot nicer, but also helps prevent erosion. So, under the original policy, they'd have to tear that out, which would damage the stream bed, we would rather they just leave it in, but there's other portions where they have like... There's other portions where they have like little walkways leading up to their backyard, we say, some of those need to be removed so it doesn't look like a little private area. So that's, we want to have flexibility to deal with both of those types of situations.
Okay.
I love it.
Sorry, I was just gonna know, on when we're interpreting or determining what improvements we would allow to stay, we are careful in that, well, these improvements become, we're accepting these as being city maintained and so we're not just allowing any and all improvements on there, like even if they do benefit city property, we're making sure to determine, okay, can we maintain this if this breaks down, that sort of thing?
But rocks along a creek, I mean, some of that stuff doesn't require maintenance, yeah.
I appreciate that, I, I just want to, and I agree with all of this, this was really the spirit of it, right? But I don't want this to become an excuse to not enforce the encroachment policy, like I don't want it to be, oh yeah, we don't really want to deal with our residents, so we're gonna, you know, go ahead and let it slide.
We had the exact same concern, we tried to be careful and wary not to just say, not to leave, open the door where the resident could just say, oh, it says here I don't have to remove everything, because that's not the goal, but the goal was, we remove everything that makes it look like a private benefit, we can leave those things that really do benefit the city and that the city can maintain, but that's it. So.
Do you have a motion, proposed motion?
Sorry, just one more little change, just the grandfathering, as we talked about before, some prior maintenance agreements were approved by previous city councils that allowed for improvements, you know, beyond the 2,500 irrigables, square footage or other improvements that are no longer allowed, and the council gave direction for staff to say, so, the current law that says, once your old agreement expires, you have to get a new one and comply with it, which would require people to remove improvements that the city previously allowed by a maintenance agreement. So, the next change is to, basically to say, we will grandfather those previous improvements in, if you followed your, your prior improvement plan and got approved, great, those stay in even under the new maintenance agreement.
And most of those improvements are like shrubs, bushes and irrigation.
Right.
Yeah, grass.
So that's, those are the three changes.
I'll make a motion, if that's okay. I move that the city council approve the amendment to the encroachment policy as presented in the staff report.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Scott, we'll start with Sarah.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Five, zero. We now move on to item number eight, which is an action, a development agreement amendment with Highland Marketplace.
I do have a quick question and I, I'm observing that we're three minutes to 10:00 PM and I do know that there's something in, or is it, what do we have in there, was it back in 1998?
So by.
At 10:00 PM.
By resolution and or ordinance, you need to have a motion to continue beyond 10:00 PM.
That's what I do understand.
Okay, is, is the council in favor of amendment?
I'll make that motion because I think we've had the public sit here for a long time and it'd be bad to then not do it.
Watch your motion.
I move that we continue the meeting past 10:00 PM.
Yeah.
For.
Can we put a limit on that?
Thirty minutes.
Perfect.
I love the thirty minutes, and can we skip to the items that are applicable to those in the room so that we, they've been very patient.
Number eight is, definitely.
I'll second Scott's motion. Scott, Scott's motion to extend for thirty minutes, past ten o'clock to 10:30, I have Tim that's seconded that. Sarah, in favor, yes?
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Be noted that Brittany Bills is not present, probably got to that ten o'clock.
She left at ten.
Okay, being sensitive for the residents are here, is there a certain item that the residents are here on that they, that we could possibly, is there one item we'd like to hear, is there something that you guys are here on?
Well, actually, so number eight, so Mr. Joe Hamm's here for number eight for this next one, and I know two individuals in the back are actually here for one of our communication items, thirteen A, the Phyllis Smith annexation proposal.
Okay.
I'm unsure of if there are other ones that are of interest.
And so I'm gonna, we're gonna move up, because I'm not sure how long the amendments could do, we're gonna move up at this time to number thirteen A.
Oh, okay.
The Phyllis Smith annexation proposal. Are we okay?
As in after item eight or before item eight?
Before item eight, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Joe.
Are you okay with that?
Joe, I'm just worried yours could be a little more communication, so that's.
We only watch so much more.
Okay, we're into our time, okay, item number thirteen A, Phyllis Smith annexation proposal. Now this is not a, this is not a votable, a votable item, this is only for communication, correct?
That is correct, and I'm just gonna give a quick little background presentation and then obviously they are present if you have any questions for them. And so, just to give you a little background, this is the CNEV map, so up here is ninety-six, ninety-six hundred north. And the property with the star right here, that is a subject property owned by Ms. Phyllis Smith. And then we have this parcel here that is currently owned by Highland City, it is not dedicated as right-of-way, it's city property. How it became city property was back in 1988, in April, at the April City Council meeting, the miners were requesting to annex into Highland City and when it went to the Planning Commission, basically the miners were requesting to not have to do the public improvements down from ninety-six hundred to their home as they, their impact was one lot. And so, basically the agreement that the council came to with the miners was, okay, you don't have to do all the public improvements, you do have to provide road base, they ended up asphalting their little private lane and then they had to dedicate that right, or that property to the city, that way we could ensure that these improvements would end up being completed once the property was subdivided. And so as long as this state is one lot and this was as a private lane, those public improvements wouldn't be required and then when the miners came to subdivide, to have additional access from here, then all of those public improvements along, inside that parcel would be required. And so with this request, the request to waiver, so Phyllis Smith is requesting to annex into Highland City, she's currently in the county, and with the purpose of subdividing to have two lots right here, and then on the southern portion to have access through this Highland City property. This is in our annexation plan, it's designated as supposedly R-120 if it were to be annexed into the city, just like all the other property that's south of ninety-six hundred, we have it as that buffer zoning between American Fork and Highland. And so that, basically with square footage, they'd be able to meet those R-120 requirements, but with our typical requirements in the development code, we would require them to do half-street improvements, which would include all the improvements on the west side of the center line plus ten feet of asphalt on the east side of center line, and then obviously the utilities would be needed to bring access to the southern portion. And then, that's basically it, and they were, sorry, they're requesting to not have to do those public improvements, they did provide an exhibit in their waiver request, which is attached in that staff report, that showed the, basically like cost analysis of what they would pay if they only did the city utilities but didn't do the full public improvement requirement, and so you're free to look at that.
So obviously you need a road to access the back part, I was a little confused when I read through the material, what they're proposing for access into their property, I understand they're willing to do, you gotta have the utilities there, you've gotta have water and sewer and stuff, but what are, I didn't understand the proposal for a road, because obviously you have to access that, right?
Correct, so their request is essentially to continue this as a private lane, but still pay for the cost of bringing the utilities.
So if the miners someday subdivide, then it would become a city street?
That is correct.
Okay.
But that parcel, I thought's already owned by the city.
Yes, as in, they were, or the city required them to dedicate it so they could ensure that it would eventually be improved.
Who maintains the road right now that's currently there?
Probably no one. We honestly, majority of us didn't even know that that was city property until this came up, so it's just treated like a private lane, because that's what was in the motion.
What's different than this than a flag lot, where we had flag lots come in, what's the difference between this proposal and a flag lot?
As far as Ms. Smith's proposal to?
I mean, this is a lot behind a house and, and we've had flag lots come in and we, we had said no on flag lots, what's unique about this characteristic different than a flag lot?
I guess the unique thing is just that there is actual city, public property adjacent to it, no, it's not right-of-way, but it is city property, so I guess the drive access wouldn't necessarily be from inside the lot, it would be from public property.
So by code, if we're following it line by line or that, they would have to put in a city road there to access this one?
They would have to do half-street improvements plus ten feet of asphalt.
But that's, that's really, really expensive, right, for a single home, right?
Correct, and the other thing to point out, and this was in the staff report as well, just that any waiver to our typical public improvement requirements would just be included in the annexation agreement. The council has full discretion in either allowing or not allowing the request to waiver these requirements.
The question is, once we allow, so Rob, what would preclude others from doing the same thing? Once we do it here and we do a waiver, do we have problems where others will come and they can point back to this and say, hey, you did it here, well, you, you need to do it for us too?
No, that's, I mean, as Kelly just said, annexation is a fully legislative process and so councils can, you can determine any term and condition you want on an annexation request, because you can always just say, well, then we won't allow the annexation if you don't agree to terms. But as a practical matter, and I think we, we have seen this in other similar cases where, even though the council does have discretion to allow or not allow this and doesn't necessarily have to give it to anyone else, as soon as it is granted, much like this, it is essentially a flag lot, we will likely hear from others who will say, why don't you enter a development agreement with us to modify the code provisions? We can always tell them, obviously the council doesn't have to approve it, but we may still get the request and.
So, but isn't this a little different in that the property, part of it's city-owned, it's an annexation thing, it's not the discussion we had with flag lots before?
It's not exactly the same, no. And as I said, we can always cabin this and then we may still get a request and the council can say no and you'll be perfectly within your rights to deny a future request for a flag lot or anything else.
But they could, I mean, they could meet the requirement by make, by putting the road in plus ten feet, I mean, they could do the same lot by putting the road plus ten, it's just the question is they don't want to put the road in. I mean, that's really what the whole crutch to them, do we want or we have them, if they put the road in plus ten, it keeps with our code, because they have the frontage along a city road, or not, or to grant the request and not make them to put the road in, that's really the.
So, one of the other problems here though is the agreement with the miners years ago in nineteen eighty-eight, is if they developed or subdivided that, they would have to put the road in, then we're having somebody else put the road in for one lot. So I think there's a little bit of, you know, you never can make anything totally fair.
Well, no, but who would bear the burden of putting that road in, would be the?
So, the way the original agreement was kind of entered into would be the, the miners are responsible for the whole road if they subdivide. Theoretically, you could do it, even though they're not on the other half, you could say, well, if, you know, we require this owner to do half of it, you just have to do the other half now.
But we're requiring half plus ten feet, I mean, that's pretty much most of the road.
Yes.
So what is it you're needing from us, because this is underneath communication items?
Sorry, thank you. The purpose of this was to bring it forward to the council to kind of get y'all's initial opinions before they went forward with the formal annexation application process, because it, it is a long process and there's a lot of noticing requirements, a lot of staff time, and so it was just trying to get your initial opinions on whether you would want to require these public improvements or not, just to give them kind of an idea before going through that process.
Okay, council, can you give us my dis? Or do you have other questions?
Well, I'm always vocal, I support the Smiths on this issue. I think this is a real unique issue and I think we need to be accommodating, because I think eventually that road will go through when the miners develop the property and then I think they can work things out. I just think it's a lot of expense for one lot and I read all the material, are you Phyllis?
No, I'm Lisa Baston, I'm their attorney.
Oh, they're attorney, okay. But I understood there was real, such a cost inhibition, they couldn't do the project, is that right?
But Scott, is it our responsibility to make sure they're profitable to put their lot in?
No, but I think, you know, we can get into a lot of philosophical things, I, I just think this is a unique situation and I support the request. So, no one else needs to do it, I just think it's a unique.
But can other council members chime in to help give them some feedback?
And we might put a preschooler, who knows?
There's no number.
That's right.
As long as they don't put flowers there.
Rest of the council, can you give some input, so the miners can have what your thought is?
It's not the miners.
Oh.
It's the Smiths.
Smiths, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just keep seeing the miners there, so.
I gotta think about this one more, because for me, it's not just one lot, it's two lots really. This is actually hard as, as a gold personality, I, I can't give an answer yes or no, because I just have to research it out a little bit more.
That's where I'm at as well.
Okay.
It's, it's, you know, the precedence that Rob was talking about worries me.
Brittany or Tim?
We can, if I'm not mistaken, we can word it in such a way that it is very specific and it does not create precedent, and as a blue personality.
You want to work with him?
I, I want to work, well, we did this team building exercise, we're kind of joking about it, but as a blue personality, I, I tend to want to work with them, but I agree with Kim, we need to do a little more research, but if the city attorney indicates that we can do it in such a way that it does not create precedent, then I think that kind of sways me to agree with Scott, so.
So, let me just ask a couple of questions. If they don't annex into Highland, and it may encourage them not to, is on the west, is that Lehigh or is that part of Highland? That's Lehigh. So if we don't grant this, then it would be easy for them to go to Lehigh or to American Fork.
They could, we still have the property there with the road.
They are, yeah, they are in our annexation plan and then also the, this road, correct me if I'm wrong, oh my goodness, there is nothing in there. The road right here is in Highland City and so these are our city's utilities right here.
Right.
But where is Lehigh?
The one next to it.
Right, that's all Lehigh.
Just west to it, and so we just have this little unincorporated parcel.
And if it went to, if it went to Lehigh, they would grant them twenty lots.
Yeah, and the D.R. Horton property, if I remind you, up in the northwest was in our annexation plan, so I think we have to be careful and kind of take that into consideration.
We do have a road in front of this, the D.R. Horton, we didn't have any roads and, and so.
Well, they did all the, along the east side.
Counsel members, if I, if I may, and certainly you can deliberate, but on the west, to say that they're gonna develop in Lehigh or go to Lehigh and develop is probably unrealistic, you've got to develop subdivision there, for them to develop an access, develop a lot they would need an access, and if Highland City's unwilling to give up the road corridor, which, ninety-six hundred north road corridor, then, you know, they would not have the ability to develop in another city, you know, really, I mean, as I'm looking at it, it's, it's either stay as you are in Utah County or come to Highland City and work through the city's rules and requirements, whatever those are as determined by the council, but I don't, I don't think that looking at other communities is a viable option in this case.
Brittany, you kind of haven't chimed in.
Yeah, I'm kind of leaning with Councilman Smith under this one, but I'm, you know me and I, my research, that's kind of how I'm leaning.
And truthfully, that's the way I'm leaning as well, is, is to approve it, so, but I guess my question is, is do we have all of the questions answered?
Okay.
So, with that, mayor and council, is there additional information you want either the Smiths or staff to gather for you before we move forward with an annexation process or should the Smiths prepare an annexation application and we go through the process and you get the information that way?
I just always like to feel like I know what else is going to be impacted by the decision, like what are the other possible ramifications, that's the, the thing that I think about.
Well, it is an exception, but I think it's a valid one, in my opinion.
I'm okay with them going through the application process, I.
Me too.
I think that will answer any questions and I'm leaning that way, I. I think that will answer any questions, and I'm leaning that way. I, I don't see a lot of barriers. I just want to know the additional details.
Correct.
Okay, I think you got your feedback. We're now at 10:15. We've got 15 more minutes. So hopefully that got, got them enough information.
Do they understand what we've decided here? Do you understand?
Mayor, City Council, Lisa Baskin, I think so. What you're saying is, you're leaning towards allowing the exception.
Proceed with the annexation and...
With the annexation.
Yes.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's moved to item number eight, which is the action development agreement amendment with Highland Marketplace.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Jo Ham did fly in from California just for this meeting, so I was really hoping you didn't postpone it. Okay, this is, I mean, y'all have looked at this a million times, but this is a vicinity map for Highland Marketplace. Just the subject property is that undeveloped area. On November 1st, Jo Ham, representing MNG Highland Development LLC, presented a new site plan and architectural standards for Highland Marketplace, kind of just to get the council's opinions, if you wanted anything changed before going forward with amending the existing development agreement. And in general, the council members shared support for the architectural themes and just gave suggestion to move forward with the amendment to be presented to the council. So just kind of giving a summary of the development agreement, one of them is regarding the masonry wall, you know, that exists on the west side. There is the existing wall that was completed when the other buildings were built. The nor, the wall along the north boundary that's along the church property has not been installed yet, and so it's just requiring that that be installed before the first C of O for the undeveloped property is issued. Just giving them that deadline to make sure it's completed. As far as the landscaping and lighting plans, those are exhibits in the development agreement, and they are consistent with the CR Zone regulations, as is. There are details that would still need to be determined, like for the landscaping plan, that would be reviewed by staff at the civil, civil plan review stage. As far as the signage, kind of biggest change is that the commercial center, well, they're proposing a commercial center monument sign rather than that 25-foot-tall freestanding sign that we actually did a text amendment for. I'm going to show you. So this is just an overall kind of site map showing locations of the signage, and so they're actually not doing this one because it's on CVS's property, and they don't own it. But they will have it on the private side of the parkway detail, one along SR-92 and one along SR-74. This is what it looks like. You have this kind of pillar feature here, that's a maximum of 10 feet, and then the rest of it is 6 feet. And as far as, they would also include some directional signage within the site. Those specific locations are shown on that little map I just showed. But this is just kind of giving you themes or an idea of what those signs would look like. And then these are just, it's just examples of the theme of the retailer/restaurant signage that would be on the interior. And then moving on to the architectural themes, the, there are a couple photos that were included in the original packet that Jo Ham had presented to the council last council meeting. But this is one of them, just showing different roof pitches, materials. Here's another image. This is inside that campus plaza, just showing what it could look like as far as architectural themes. We did have them include this exhibit, which was also in that packet, just again, showing roof pitches, materials, warmth, just the colors to get more of an, an idea of what the architectural theme would be expected to be. And then he did include, well, it's two exhibits, just kind of giving them freedom on, the only change really is this material on the top portion of the building. But this is meant to be one of the office buildings that's on the north, northern property, and he's just kind of showing how they would incorporate these two-story office buildings with the architecture in the campus plaza. This, so difference with this compared to the old development agreement, they are proposing to allow them to have two site plans as options. Currently, it's not finalized with, if they were going to have an additional building, so they're wanting to take care of this city council approval to give them the freedom to switch when the time comes. Biggest difference is, this one has seven buildings, has a total of 142,418 square feet, and that's the building, or that's the total, like, commercial square footage. And then that comes out to 93,535 square feet as the building footprint over the site. And then they do provide for 580 parking stalls, which does meet the four stalls per thousand-square-feet requirement. And then option two, this is the main difference, is an additional building here, but then this office building would be switched to one story. So you have eight buildings, one additional building, and then 129,762 square feet, and then that's a 97,257 square foot building footprint. So technically, this is a larger building footprint, but it's actually less commercial square footage.
Why, why the decision to make it one story?
They almost look like, are they going to be individual retailers, is the thought, that they might, I mean, it looks like it might be more of what we call strip mall look, or individual retailers back there?
This does still have it as being office uses back here with the switch.
But could you have retailer?
I mean, as far as the use, it would be a permitted use, but obviously, yeah.
Yeah, come on up.
We found, as we were proceeding, Jo Ham, by the way, MNG, we found as we were marketing that we had quite a bit of interest in home improvement and furniture and that kind of tenant-looking, and they did not want to be in a two-story building. However, I will tell you, just as things ebb and flow, we've had someone approach us that would like to take the entire two-story office building now. So we may not do option two, but we're, it's very preliminary. No one has seen what final approval we will receive, and so we don't have commitments yet. But we wanted that flexibility.
So which gives you more flexibility, two or one?
He was asking for both. He wants to have approval.
Oh, you want to have both?
We wanted to have...
Okay, so I didn't understand that.
Yes, yes. Only because the use that would like a single-story, we, we have a user that would like a single-story facility, and now we have a user that would like both the two-story building.
Okay. How much square footage increase is this over the old site plan?
Oh, goodness. The old site plan had that big old grocer, and so, here, one second.
45,000 square. Do you, do you have any idea how much, does it increase square footage?
Oh, actually, it's in my report. Just a second.
Are you asking me from the preliminary plan that we received approval for? Yes, it increases square footage.
I, and this is a, are you getting a lot, and maybe I haven't showed this to any restaurants or other, are you getting people interested in this kind of concept with the, the center court?
Yes. It, it has really changed who we can speak to and who will return our calls now. Our broker's done with what he has right now. We haven't finished all of our marketing materials. But the few, both local and outside the area, full-service restaurants that we have spoken to and had an opportunity to describe the plaza area, and given them some comparisons to other developments in the United States and elsewhere, we've received just a wonderful response. So we feel confident that we've got something here that will be unique.
I noticed in this, you did keep a, a drive-through in that far bottom corner, is that right?
It, we, we did, only because that just hasn't fit in any, with anything else. We don't want to put an office there, and...
Right.
The one, the question I had, Kelly, is the signage. If we, you come, where you showed the sign is by where the quick-quack exit would be at, you know, where the rocks burying that, they'll have to have it pulled back enough that it's not going to block any, where, so you can see to get on SR-92, correct?
Oh, we would, yeah, we would check site distances and triangles before it was installed.
Okay, I just want to make sure for safety.
And if we can't comply in that plan, or perhaps we have to dedicate a parking space or two to push the sign back. But I've never come before, city council before, and asked them to please let me reduce the height of the sign, so I hope you'll let us do that.
Can I, I just had a couple of questions. Kelly, in the resource material, and I know we're getting close to the end here, there was a lot of talk about different setbacks, anywhere from 10 to 100 feet, and I think 100-foot setback is really excessive, unless it's all parking lot or something.
Right. So just to clarify, that 100-foot, it's always coupled with a minimum from property line. And so the 100-foot isn't from property line, it's specifically from a main wall of a home or residence, and it's not including any detached structures.
Okay, so it includes their yard, too. I didn't understand that.
No, yeah. So it's, this is the only building that is really impacted by that, is that drive-through building, because of how close this home right here is to the property line or boundary of the development. And the last time we did this, they did shift the building to meet that 100-foot minimum.
Now, where, this does not connect into that, that dead-end road there, does it?
No.
No, it doesn't.
It does not.
Correct.
And I think the neighbor's one of that, so...
If you ever go talk to that neighbor, she's a delightful lady.
She's very sweet. She calls all the time.
So I'll just make one quick comment, because I talk too much. But I think this is wonderful. I support both options 100%.
Thank you.
The more retail in there and less office, I'm kind of, would like to see more retail if possible, but I'm happy with your options.
So Joe, just so you're aware, Costa Vida opened up, number-one drive-through in all of their chain, number-one store for the, for the very first two weeks it was open, in all of their corporate stores, not their franchise, but their corporate stores.
They're lined up, even after they figure out how to get in.
Yeah. We're here in strong sell, so, and I understand that's a little over by Ridge View, but there's a demand, I think, that you're going to notice, so.
Great.
I think you're seeing that. That's why your retailers are trying to come in, so.
Forward to it.
Okay, any other questions, or?
I think it's great. Thank you. Thanks for coming again.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion. Thanks, Joe. I move that the city council approve the amendment to the development agreement between MNG Highland Development LLC, SPP Holdings Reverse LLC, Successors to the Thomas Fox Properties LLC, and Highland City, and authorize the mayor to execute the document.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Scott. Tim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to zero.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for sitting through our deliberations.
I think he enjoys. Okay, item number 10. We have action plat amendment to Beacon Hill. Guys, actually, it's 10:27. We need another motion to extend past those. Is there a motion to expand past 10:30?
I, I move that we approve this plat amendment.
I'll second.
Okay, we all now have a vote on the plat amendment. Why can't you make the motion? Maybe you better make this motion up there.
I move that the city council accept the fines and approve Beacon Hill, the Highlands plat, G4, lots 543 and 544 amended, subject to the two stipulations recommended by staff.
Second.
Okay, I hope, that means you've read the documents.
Yes, I of course have read it.
I'm just double-checking that. I don't want this time thing to cause bad policy.
Never.
Okay, Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
That passes five to zero. Okay, we have number 11. I think we can get that one done. Is there a motion to, you have the motion up there?
Come on. I move that the city council approve and adopt the amendments to municipal code section 2 dot 12 dot 095.
I second.
Kim and Brittany?
And this isn't controversial, in my opinion, either. Okay.
Okay, Sarah?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Five, zero. Okay, expedited items. I don't think, guys, we now need a motion to, I have a feeling the library needs to, Donna's been sitting here most of the night.
Yeah, let's...
Let's, let's...
So I need a motion.
I move that we go past 10:30 by four minutes.
Well, we've got some communication items, too.
Well, they can be done later.
Any items down here on the communication that cannot be done later?
Modern income housing, sorry.
Modern income housing, we would like to do, and we would like to, so there's two that are not listed on here, policies and procedures update, and a Ridge View commercial traffic flow discussion.
Well, we all read the, the, a moderate housing thing, and my opinion is, is to tell them to pound sand.
Okay. What?
Should we go on to? And we all agree that traffic at Costa Vida sucks.
Okay, what, what time of, okay, what time, guys, are you willing to amend the time from 10:30 further on? Is there a motion to do that?
I motion to amend the time to 10:40.
Is it going to give Donna enough time?
Donna, how much time do you need?
If you're going to approve it, I don't need to talk about it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to...
10:40?
10:40, yeah.
10:40. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Nay.
That's a nay. You didn't want, okay. It still passed four to zero.
I did. So much fun.
Okay, item number 10A, the library strategic plan. Is there any comments we need, or everyone read it and ready to vote? Okay.
I move that the city council approve the Highland City Library Long Range Strategic Plan, and it's a great plan, Donna.
And I read it carefully. Thank you, and I want to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Kim, second by Scott. Tim?
Yes, from one blue to another.
Okay, Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes, but Brittany has a stipulation.
Only if we can, only if we can see what you were drawing the whole time.
You can talk to the act.
Okay.
Okay. We have the action agreement of a pressurized irrigation metering with the state of Utah. That is Andy. Can you be brief?
This is a agreement to get $5 million.
Now, we motioned this one, too. This is...
Is there anything that you're, that you, we need to high-level be aware of here that we're voting on?
No, this is kind of consistent with what you've seen on all of our recent pressurized irrigation stuff. This is the $5 million from the state. It does require a local match, and that's been included in our budgeting, so.
I want to thank Andy again for all the work you've done on getting these grants and different things, because you've generated a lot of income for the city that we don't have to...
Thank you.
...raise from our citizens. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
I might have received a summary of that today in the tune of $16 million.
Wow.
What? Andy?
Real fast, since it came up.
Merry Christmas.
Highland Elementary Safe Route to Schools, 130,000. 4800 West Trail and Safety, 5.44 million. Mitchell Hollow Trail, 2.5. Watersmart, 2.2 million, which is what we're talking about. The state water, the state meter grant, 5 million. The GEO Local Government Grant for 1 million, is that what, Stuart?
I mean, that's more than our city budget.
Has a total grant funding of $16,118,300. Okay, any other discussions that you feel like we need to have on the grant?
I'll make the motion.
I have a quick question. It just, it says we're bound by nondiscrimination laws in hiring. Does that mean there's a specific quota, or that just means we cannot make decisions based upon race, orientation, et cetera?
The second one, not the first.
Okay, because I know that the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers would require certain things for jobs, and there weren't certain types of people available in certain areas of the country, and it kind of kneecapped, okay, so.
No, this is just saying we have to do what the state already requires us to do, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I, I'll make the motion if you'll pop it up there again. Okay.
I move the city council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with the state of Utah to receive grant funding for the pressurized irrigation meter project in the amount of $5 million.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Scott, second by Sarah. First vote will be Sarah.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Five, zero. We now move on to the mayor communication items, and we will let you guys pick which one or two you feel is the most important.
We're going to do modern income housing with Kelly.
Very, very quick. You obviously received that letter. I have listened to two trainings so far from the league and the state. Basically, the strategies have to match what's in state code verbatim. Every single city that even changed articles in the sentences were denied. And so there were a lot of people that received that letter. Another thing is that the timelines, where we were kind of general in them, we do need to be extremely specific. Where we have a timeline for, that accounts for five years with specific benchmarks, this is just an example that they sent us, where you have a specific date slash year with your action item. And so I am basically using, these are primarily our four implementation measures that the council approved with the last amendment. And so I, right now, Erin and I are just working on drafting those benchmarks. You're not going to see it again until February, because this is going to go on the January Planning Commission. I guess if, if we come closer and end up needing to talk about it, we will reach out to y'all, but...
But the bottom line is, with Ridge View and... But the bottom line is, with Ridge View and some of these other developments, we're meeting this criteria, don't we just have to explicate that better?
A lot of people have asked the state, when we have ongoing things, or have already accomplished one of our implementation measures, what does that mean? And basically, because the state, and it's in state code, that they require us to provide annual reports of how we're meeting these strategies, you just have to come up with other benchmarks to continue it.
So what happens if we don't do this? Because I think it's wrong for them to mandate that we do these things when we're already doing them, and the cities, the citizens of Hanan don't want more high-density and stuff, and I think it's, what do we lose? We lose some possible funding that we don't get anyway? Are they going to arrest us, throw us all in jail? I mean, I feel pretty strongly about this, where we've got all this high-density in Ridge View and the city center, we've met these criteria, and this is, this is pushed by the developers to put our city in high-density, and I'm opposed to it. And so what happens if we don't meet criteria, or they don't like what we do? Are they going to arrest the council? Are they going to distance, what are they going to do to us?
They had strings in their letter, right, like if you don't...
If you don't do this, you don't get this funding, but we don't get it anyway, most of the time, I mean, what happens to us?
I see, I assume they would maybe branch it out to different state funding that we may get, I, someone else asked a similar question in the training that I, that we listened to, and they just didn't have a clear answer. Majority of cities are trying to comply and are very open about, hey, we weren't trying to get around your requirements, but I, I guess maybe there will be other cities that act the same, react the same.
But I think we need to go to Senator Kendy and Representative Bremer and says, we don't like this, because this is heavy-handed, and it's by the developer lobbyist group that's forcing high-density in our cities. I just think we say, we're not going to do it.
Okay, thank you for the information, but we're going to be having, it's going to go to a planning commission, it could become through a planning commission, it'll be come back to council in February. Anything else?
For the financial report, Tyler is going to hand, just hand out what he has already sent you in email, the one, and so you can refer to his email. The one thing we do want to point out is, council member Peterson had requested us, can we look at kind of where we were at last year, so we know, you know, even if you spend a whole bunch, it's okay, it's normal, or a small amount, and so we have updated the report to include that, and so we'd welcome any additional feedback you have there. We're going to skip D and E, rob high-level overview of the main points of the policies and procedures that we have drafted for you, council, that we want to bring back, we want your feedback now, so we can bring it back in January.
Yes, so we took the policy that we already adopted and added a few more, I think fairly major changes. We addressed officers, we are proposing a change. The current city treasurer is Candace, it's odd that the council, the mayor is supposed to appoint Candace as the treasurer, but she rarely actually reports to the council. We're going to change the title to, Tyler will be the city treasurer slash financial director, so that that position will be an appointed position that comes to the council. A lot of job duties are not going to change, because that's mostly fraud prevention and that type of thing, but listening to the council, that would be a position that would be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the council. As to removal of officers, the major change is, the proposal is for the city administrator to do it with the mayor and council's consent, or with unanimous consent of the council, without the mayor's consent, but having the city administrator take the lead role, because the administrator is still kind of the lead over the employment side of things once an officer is appointed. We also go through and clarify certain things about how agendas are set, where the mayor can put something on the agenda, city administrator can put something on the agenda, two council members can put an action item on an agenda, or one council member can just put a discussion item on an agenda. The mayor can't remove anything if it was put on by a council without the council member's approval, otherwise mayor can control the agenda generally.
Sounds good.
You look very concerned. Trying to think of anything else, two council members can call special meetings, that's already in state law. We go through and kind of clarify the different officers, that's clear for the council to understand, and then there's kind of an overview of council staff interactions, where it's, you know, if you're talking with an officer, or something that's already talking to you about a project, or you have simple information, feel free to talk with them, get that information. If it requires something that requires a significant amount of work, or kind of a shift in priority, better to handle that either through the city administrator, or as a kind of group council decision, where you say, as a, we're going to set a priority for staff to take the following actions, and then carry it out that way. That's kind of the high-level summary, we're trying to keep it as short as possible without, you know, making a 60-page document, but that's what we were looking at doing.
For...
Certainly, this is just, we have come up with initial draft that we're circulating internally, we're going to bring it to you, we just didn't have time tonight, so, you will absolutely see this, and you can review it for as long as you would like before it gets approved, if it does get approved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ridge View, really fast, because I've had multiple members of the council ask me about this one. Andy has a pretty picture for you.
Guys, it is 10:40, everyone okay?
Yeah.
So we're moving a little past 10:40 on this item, okay?
Okay, I will be very quick. Council members, what we are proposing is that we will install directional signage in two locations that will direct people how to get into the roundabout to then get into Costa Vida if they are heading west. We will also install a sign that will tell you, you cannot turn left into the right-in, right-out entry that is supposed to, you're not supposed to do, but people are doing. If the signage proves ineffective, the next stage would be to put a raised island where that yellow line is on the screen, that would further prevent people from being able to make that left turn, and, and depending on how far we carry the island west, would, you know, make it completely impossible, because that would be one of the taller islands. So our proposal is to, as quickly as we can get the signs made, we'll install them as shown, and then we'll evaluate after a time period and see whether we want to go to the island.
Is the roundabout finished?
They're doing the landscaping, the roundabout's functional, they're doing the landscaping in the roundabout, but it functions as a traffic feature.
Okay, and so is the signage around the roundabout one-way and that set, because when I drove in there, it wasn't finished, my wife gave me heck, because I kind of made it shorter and...
Fair enough, fair enough.
He didn't, he didn't do that, chief, just, he didn't do that, it's fine.
But it wasn't finished, I had to drive over...
Why do we have, do we always have to pay for businesses' signs?
Anything else you need to be aware of there?
Be happy to talk.
No, unless, unless the council doesn't like this approach.
The only thing, there's also not, I guess, I think this would be great, we'll just get the signs, just so you're aware, the city is paying for the signs to go on this, this is not something Boyer's doing.
We can't require them to do it, council member bills.
Because this isn't, you know, they already got their site plan approved.
Well, they're lined up there, we've got to be making some sales tax. I think we should support them, because they've got big competition coming.
I agree. This, since we're looking right here, Arby's Grand Opening will be a week from this Thursday at 10:00 AM. You have it down there? On December 22nd, Arby's Grand Opening. And then we have the Reis of America, it's also, it's that Saturday, is it the, what is it date?
17th.
17th, that will be at 9:00 AM over at the cemetery.
You can come here Saturday morning at 10 to meet Santa, too, and party with the council.
Oh, it's on my calendar, yeah.
Santa's coming, okay, with that...
Mayor, Reis Across America is going to start at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM on the 17th?
10:00 AM is the ceremony.
Oh, good.
Oh, good.
That's good to see. Okay, okay, with that, I need a motion to adjourn our meeting, but we need to go into closed session on a couple of items. We can be fast in the closed session.
So I move that we adjourn the meeting and move into closed session.
Oh, yes, we can adjourn the meeting, we just go to closed session, I'm sorry.
We move.
Why, it's going to be...
We need a purpose.
Discuss employment aspects.
So I move the city council move into closed session to discuss the character professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual as provided by Utah Code annotated 52-4-205.
Can you put a time limit on it?
Okay, I have a motion by Brittany, a second by Kim, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're now in closed session.